Good morning.
Good morning.
The time is now nine thirty and a half, so we're almost on time. And a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Ed meeting of May 13th, 2014 is called to order. And the board's encouraged me to kind of keep the meeting moving, so I'll do that as respectfully as I can. But we're going to start on time and try to move the agenda. It's a pretty full one today. First item is the approval of agenda and the order of priority. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Supported by John. Any discussion, changes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Thank you. Mertz, please.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce you to the people seated at the table. To my left is Mike Flanagan. He's the state superintendent and chairman of the board. As we go around the table, John Austin, president of the board, resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Ulbrich, the board's vice president, resides in Rochester Hills. Dan Varner is the board secretary. He's from Detroit. He will be arriving later this morning. Lupe Ramos-Montini is from Grand Rapids. She's a board member. This year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, Gary Abud Jr. He's from the Gross Point North School System where he teaches science and physics. Across the table, the governor's education adviser, Craig Ruff. Next to him, Eileen Weiser, board member from Ann Arbor, who's on her way. Kathleen Strauss, board member from Detroit. Michelle Fecto, board member from Detroit. She's the board's NASBY delegate. That's their association, National Association of State Boards of Education. And next to me is Richard Zyley. He's from Dearborn. He's the board's treasurer. Thank you.
I skipped the video today with our time issues, but I did want to show you one quick picture that I think you'll recognize the person right away. Now, the person isn't the president, by the way, because I hear across the street the Republicans think I'm a Democrat and Democrats think I'm a Republican, and I'm actually kind of neither. But I'm not focusing on the president. You see another familiar face there.
Yeah, Gary.
Gary, right. Gary Abud, our Teacher of the Year. Got to go to the gay. I wasn't able -- I've been doing this nine years and have not been able to make a gay yet, but you'll have a chance probably later in your report to talk a little bit about that. But this was in the national press, and I thought I'd pull it right up and show our famous guy. Gary, thanks for representing us so well.
It's an honor. Thank you. I'm sorry?
How come you're not the one getting the super award?
That might be a lunchtime conversation.
And, um, let's see, Deb.
Deb's ill.
Okay. Well, I do want to just acknowledge upfront, so with the timing today, that I have two heroes in this department that I think they, I can't say, I can't, I think most people who work in public are underappreciated to some degree, but I think these folks are really heroes that folks haven't seen sometimes. And one is Deb Clemens, who's retiring this month. And Deb, I understand, just heard from Mertz, is ill today. She's 25 years in the department. She left for a little bit and came back. She was our, she is our state reform officer, that new law related to trying to work with the bottom 5 percent of the schools and help them make improvement. And by the way, our teachers are doing such a fabulous job because in most of those schools, even with all the challenges they have of poverty and resources, they've made improvement year in and year out. And I think a lot of it's had to do with Deb's leadership here and then, of course, the real action in the buildings themselves. So we'll have another chance, I hope, to acknowledge her. And another hero of mine who I've had just tremendous respect for from the time I was a superintendent, a real superintendent, 25 years ago, is Lindy Bush. And she's also retiring this month. Lindy, would you stand up and be recognized? We can't thank you enough. I don't know if we know, as, she's not only well-respected in the field here in the state, but she's really a national pioneer in so many respects. And now that kind of everyone's on board with early childhood, it wasn't always that way, right, Lindy? And I think you were a key in this department and in terms of the whole movement to help people understand the value of kids getting those opportunities earlier. So thank you so much for your service. And now we'll --
Could I say something?
Sure, ma'am.
Talking about people who make a great impression?
Can you try to speak up, Kathy? It's just a little hard to hear.
The, oh, I don't know, but 10, 12, maybe even 14 years ago, we had a presentation at the board table by a special ed student. His name was Michael Falco Feldman. He was cognitively disabled. Bright, I say bright because his eyes were bright, and he was full of personality. He wanted to be included. He went through Berkeley schools full of inclusion. And I just wanted to report to you that he has now been appointed by President Obama to the President's Commission on People with Intellectual Disabilities. He is now a peer counselor and teacher at Syracuse University in New York. He's 27, and he's just remarkable. And many of you might be aware that he wanted to go to college, but finished K-12 school. And he, they had a program at Oakland University where he could audit school, audit classes. And he did that. It took two buses to get to school, and it took him two hours to get there. And then he wanted, he wanted to have a college experience. He wanted to live in the dorm. And he applied and was approved and everything. And then one of the vice presidents said he wasn't a real student, so he couldn't live in the dorm. He wasn't a full, this was not a, it was not a degree, in a degree program. But he, he got, the students supported him, and many of the faculty supported him, but the board said, no, we can't let this happen. So he sued in federal court, and he won. So he moved into the dorm, and he just had a great experience. The students were very positive toward him, and he developed. And he, he was invited to speak at many conferences. And one of the places he was invited to speak was Syracuse University, and he decided he liked it so much. And they were so attuned to him, and his, his students like him, that he's now a peer coun, he's, he's a student there. He's still taking classes, but he's also a peer counselor and a tutor. So he said, he told his mother, Oakland University said I wasn't a real student. They were right. I'm a teacher.
That's great. Great story.
So it's a, it's a great story, and it, it just shows not only that he's a great person, but this program of inclusion works very well for a lot of students. There's something that Liz Barra talked to us about all the time, and I think it, it's, he's a case, he's an example, so I'm, it's, I'm really proud of him. He's so, he, he just has a wonderful personality, and he says, people like him because I'm So I wanted to share that with you. I just heard this yesterday, so.
Thank you. It's a great story.
It was exciting.
And I know Liz is watching, so.
Yes.
She'll probably text you.
Well, okay, we're going to get going with the committee of the whole item, and before I turn it over to John in just a moment, I wanted to just mention that John, in particular, has provided great leadership on this whole topic and getting people to come before us. And I even noticed a lot of my Ed Alliance friends are here today to support kind of, even though they have one presenter during their time, they're all here because they know it's important and appreciate the opportunity. The board, as you know, has been hosting presentations on school organization and finance, and I think John's written the board to try to maximize time today or be efficient on time. He's asked presenters to try to do it in about 15 minutes, so they're going to come up. And these are really impressive guests, by the way. I don't know if you're, those of you who aren't in the know, each and every one of these folks is someone special who really knows their stuff and has really advocated for kids somewhat differently at times, but we're lucky to have them here, and I'd like to turn it over to John for introductions.
And as Mike noted, we're continuing to dedicate some time to this discussion about the school finance and organizational challenges and pointing us to solutions, gathering thoughtful, diverse perspectives. To date, we've heard from experts and policy analysts today, and over the next few meetings, we're going to hear from some of our stakeholder organizations, our constituencies who are involved in education. As Mike said, we've got four presentations briefed today, so we're going to not discuss to maximize opportunity for folks to come before us and present, though all of their presentations are going to be, and the ones to date that we've had, excellent ones, are online and posted at the www.michigan.gov/sbe website. Thank you, Marilyn. You can get the presentations there and even the great ones that we've had from the experts to date. So first up is Mitch Bean, who is representing a set of organizations that Mike alluded to, the American Federation of Teachers, the Association of Intermediate School Administrators, the Association of School Administrators, the School Board Association, the MEA. We'll hear from Steve Cook, the MEA shortly. School business officials in the city. Thank you for coming together and coming to the meeting, leadership leaders of these organizations. Mitch Bean is a former House Fiscal Agency Director, former chief economist for the Michigan House Representatives, and thank you for sharing perspective on this topic on behalf of this organization.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to testify to the board this morning. Again, my name is Mitch Bean. With your permission, I'll make a few opening remarks, then I'll turn to some slides, and we'll go through those. I'm standing in for the author of the report, Doug Drake. He couldn't be here due to some medical issues. As has been mentioned, seven associations sponsored the report. They're all listed in the report, and a number of their executives are in attendance this morning as well. I spent about 20 years forecasting the state and national economies as senior economist and director of the House Fiscal Agency. In addition, I worked on Proposal A, and to some degree, I worked on every change to the tax code since Proposal A was enacted. During my career in state government, I brought economic revenue forecasts to 37 meetings with Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, and I was a voting principal in the conference 25 times. I'm now principal founder of Great Lakes Economics Consulting with my partner Buck Klein, and still track the economy and tax policy. I reviewed this report at various stages in the process, and I believe it's a comprehensive and an important addition to the debate. It poses important questions and provides important insights about the impact of the two-decade-long policy of cutting state taxes that was supposed to improve the lives of Michigan citizens by improving K-12 education opportunities, by creating jobs, and by creating a more prosperous state. Part of the consensus revenue estimating process is agreeing the consensus estimates of the revenue impact of tax changes. So it came as no surprise to me that the cumulative impact of tax changes since Proposal A was a reduction in revenue of about $51 billion and a reduction in available resources for K-12 of about $38 billion. These results are consistent with estimates made by Michigan Department of Treasury and reported in the publication School Finance Reform in Michigan: Proposal A Retrospective. Treasury estimated through 2003, slay the first 10 years. Prop A alone reduced taxes over $17 billion. In addition, in the May 2011 consensus conference, which was the last one that I was part of, and I was a principal at that conference, we estimated that the consensus estimate of the impact of the tax cut to the school aid fund from the Snyder Tax Plan in 2012 was $689 million reduction in revenue. That's just in 2012. So the $51 billion in cuts from Prop A and all the other tax changes over the 20-year period since Prop A, and $38 billion in cuts to K-12 education really came as no surprise to me. It also came as no surprise that the study found little evidence that state tax cuts had any significant positive effects on the state economy. Because of my 20 years or so tracking and forecasting state tax policy, state revenues, and state national economy, I've seen very little evidence of it. Now, there are important reasons that state tax cuts don't produce prosperity as advertised. One is that Michigan is about a $250 billion economy. Our economy is fully integrated with the national economy, and it's almost fully integrated with the world economy. But the Michigan economy only represents about 2.5 percent of the national economy. The impact of state tax policy on the state economy, it's important, I, you know, I want to say that upfront, but it's overwhelmed by what transpires at the national economy by federal tax and fiscal policy and by monetary policy. You could say that Fed sneezes, we catch cold. It's also true that services matter. An advanced capitalist economy cannot prosper without infrastructure, without an educated workforce, without the proper regulation, without public safety, without a system of courts, without a social safety app. And taxes are the resources we need to provide the services that allow the economy to prosper. Also, unlike the federal government, we can't run a deficit. We must balance the budget each year. So tax cuts reduce services. Tax cuts reduce the services necessary for prosperous economy, and the negative effects of insufficient services tend to offset any stimulative effects of the state tax cuts. That's why after cutting taxes for 20 years, our rank in per capita income plunged from 18th to 35th. Our unemployment rate, which was at approximately at the national average in 1994, was 25 percent below the national average in 2013. And that's why, even though we've cut business taxes until Michigan businesses pay a smaller share of state local, of the state local tax burden than almost any other state, we still don't have the booming economy that we're promised so many times. That's why even when, though we cut taxes until Michigan's businesses pay a smaller share of state local tax burden than almost any other state, I'm sorry, repeating myself. We've been told for 20 years that if we cut taxes, our economy will boom. And if, and we cut taxes by $51.1 million over the period of 1994 to 2013, it hasn't exactly been booming. During that time, state per capita income declined, declined from 18th in the nation to 35th. The state unemployment increased from 6.2 relative to the 6.1 percent rate in the U.S. to 8.4 percent relative to a 6.4 percent in U.S. rate. So the conclusion you have to draw from this is that tax cuts really haven't produced the prosperity. We have four major types of taxes. Everything can be put into these four particular groupings. Taxes on income, taxes on consumption, business taxes, and property taxes. We've cut them all. In fact, according to the most recently available data, we rank almost last among all states per per capita revenue collections from 1997 to 2011. Now, tax cuts have done one thing. They've increased our ranking in some pro-business ratings, but that's because all they're really concerned about is lower taxes. But those rankings don't correlate with increases in personal income and with Michigan citizens' prosperity. The business share of the state tax burden is also the second lowest in the nation. Now, there's been a lot of impacts. For K-12, reduced resources have contributed to reductions in all types of staff, contributed to increased class size, cuts in staff compensation, to emergency managers being appointed and reducing local control, to 46 schools in deficit, to Buena Vista and Inxter having been dissolved, to Highland Park and Muskegon Heights have been turned into charter schools. With respect to higher ed, in 1994, the state paid in, in cash at $2,014, $5,390 per student, which was about 50 percent of the cost of the degree. By 2014, the state only pays, again in $2,014, $2,981 per student, or only 21.5 percent of the cost of the degree. And consequently, school, student debt has skyrocketed. Local government revenue was reduced a cumulative of about $6.1 billion between 2000 and 2003. And cities, as a consequence, cities are in financial distress, where first responders are being laid off. So the bottom line is, since 1994, we've been promised that tax cuts would lead to prosperity, but they haven't. And the quality of public goods, including K-12, higher ed, local government services and so forth, has declined. So it's time to stop digging the hole deeper, and it's time to begin a dialogue about a new strategy for state prosperity, which will include and be based upon investments in education, investments in cities, and infrastructure needs. That's what needs to be a cornerstone of the conversation. Well, thank you. A copy of these comments are available to you.
Thank you, Mitch, and thank you for all the Ed Alliance organizations that came together to provide this testimony. Next up is two presenters on behalf of Michigan Parents for Schools. Steve Norton is the executive director, and as anyone who's been watching, Michigan Parents for Schools have been very active.
Very good.
Voice on behalf of parents of public education. He's joined by Elizabeth Lykens, and many of you know Elizabeth. She is the definition of active as well. Elizabeth in many roles, but among them, she's trustee for the East Grand Rapids School Board, trustee on the Steelcase Foundation, and is co-chair of the Friends of Kent County Schools Grassroots Committee. So thank you both for being here.
Thank you very much, President Austin, Superintendent Flanagan, members of the board, and guests. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today, and in particular, we appreciate the invitation for us to bring the voice of Michigan's parents into this discussion. And since I neglected to send in a short bio in the tornado scares yesterday, I just wanted to outline, I have two children in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and we formed our organization seven years ago in response to the struggles that our school district and school districts across the state were facing as a way of bringing the parent voice to policy discussions. Elizabeth is not just a trustee, but is a member of our board of directors and a valued colleague, and I'm very pleased to have her here today. We wanted to preface our remarks in a couple of ways, and some of what we were going to say actually, I think, has been covered rather nicely by Mr. Bean, but there are a lot of other aspects that we want to bring up, too. And the other thing that we wanted to say is that we're not necessarily in a position to bring incredibly concrete policy proposals, but what we wanted to present to you were our guiding principles and ideas that we thought needed to shape the discussion and any eventual policies. So these are the core values and ideas that have been guiding our own efforts in policy action. So to begin with, one thing that we wanted to underline was that parents value their local public schools. We appreciate all the hard work being done to those who bring, by those who bring life to public education in our state. No institution is perfect, and local public education is no exception. The parents are painfully aware of the struggles faced by our schools, and in part by policy decisions at the state level, some of which you've just heard about. Michigan public education is not broken, but it needs help to recover from the damage inflicted in the last 15 to 20 years that have reduced its ability to serve all students as well as we would like it to. Any proposals to change the structure and funding of our public schools must address this fundamental fact.
And if I could just jump in, obviously, I have the perspective of not only a local school board member, but also a very active member with the Kent ISD grassroots group. And in that capacity, I've had the opportunity to meet with anywhere from 20 to 30 different districts, parents in different districts, and it is very clear, as Mr. Norton noted, people love their public schools. They really do. I have met with urban districts, suburban districts, and rural districts, and every single one of them are deeply devoted. These communities are very devoted to their schools. So it's a very important consideration. I think people, you know, folks need to understand that. Communities very much identify with their schools. One of the things, Mr. Norton prepared this slide, and I think it's an important slide because we keep hearing that our schools are broken. Yes, we know we have challenges. Yes, we know we can always do better. Of course, we need to constantly be working to improve. But interestingly, you'll see that sort of a correlation with how we're doing with our funding levels. So I think it's important to know that if we are not investing in schools, I think we're going to see outcomes drop. So I just want to make sure we dispel the notion that money doesn't matter with schools. It, it does matter. You know, I can speak to just our district, cutting parapros K-2, kindergarten first and second. We didn't have a choice. We kept them as long as we could. We've been fundraised to save them for a couple of years, but we just couldn't do it anymore. So there are now children in a class without a parapro. They're going to be mostly the general ed students because the special ed students will get what they need by law, but our general ed students, I have to, I mean, I think we're doing a great job. Our teachers are miraculous in many ways, but if they've got 27 children and there's not a parapro in there to help them with their reading abilities in first grade, I have to imagine those reading scores are going to, in the long term, be impacted. So that's just one example of where money matters.
And the slide that we have up on screen and that you should have in your, in your packets is an example of a pattern that can be seen across many different data series of the National Assessment Educational Progress Scores, grade four, grade eight, whatever. Michigan has been, well, had been above the national average in many cases, has slipped below primarily as our rank relative to other states in terms of actual spending on K-12 education has fallen considerably.
And then we did just want to talk about some general principles that we think are really important to this discussion. Steve already talked a little bit about this. Community governed public schools are the backbone, really, of our state in many ways. It's sort of the very beginning of democracy. And obviously, I'm a relative, a year and a half into my term. I can tell you, parents very much love having access to board members to tell them all about every issue they have, and the reality is, we respond to them. We have to. That's our job. And it's very important, and as I speak to members of the electorate, they like that. They like that there's accountability on a local level that's very approachable. I think speaking to a lot of the successes of the local villages that just passed last week, again, that local, when taxpayers understand what's happening locally, they invest, and I think that happened on a statewide level last week. Governance by elected officials, again, it's accountability. It's, it's your neighbor. It's running into them at the grocery store. These are our schools. People like having the idea that these are elected officials that they know. And we also want to talk about the quality of education. Obviously, we, we do know it can be disparate based on where you live and how much a community invests in the schools, whether it's the, you know, the infrastructure. We obviously know the operating comes from Lansing, but infrastructure can vary. We do believe, obviously, every child deserves a quality of education, which prepares them to participate fully in the community regardless of where they live. And obviously, our, the future of our state depends greatly on that. And finally, of course, public schools, we believe, serve a public purpose. I mean, it sounds sort of corny, but it's democracy. It goes far beyond just preparing for jobs and careers. There's many, many other purposes public schools serve, and that's something that Michigan Parents for Schools speaks about often.
Yes, I would like to underline that, is that in the current discussion about education and how to change it or how to improve it, we're often guided down the path of thinking about it as a marketplace where families or students are consumers. And, and that could cover a certain amount of ground. But in reality, public education has always been a fundamental part of how we continue to exist as a democracy, and the public education has a public purpose, which is part of the reason why all citizens are asked to vote on and support their public schools, not just those who currently have children in the system. And I had to switch the order on this a little bit because I needed space for the graph, but one last point that should have come a little earlier. The resources that we make available for schools must match the performance that we Our expectations for K-12 schools have continued to rise, but the resources available for the education of current students has fallen significantly in real terms. And this chart is an illustration with no, no disparagement of our commitment to retired school employees at all in mind, but it shows what has happened to the, in real terms, per student, operating funds available to K-12 education once the expenditures of the pension system have been excluded. And given that the expenditures of the pension system rest entirely on the school aid fund, current employees, former employees, and current students, this is a real issue going forward.
And finally, just some issues of governance. Some of this, we've talked about already, so I'll sort of gloss over it. But obviously, public education in Michigan has been a proud priority of this state. The Northwest Ordinance, it was one of the first acts of our new nation. Michigan has a really proud history of providing public education. I know President Austin has spoken about that in some of his speeches. And since Michigan gained statehood, every version of our state constitution has charged state government with maintaining a system of free public education. We believe it should stay that way. We believe the system has largely worked. It doesn't mean we can't constantly improve. largely worked. It doesn't mean we can't constantly improve, but overall, there are many good things that frankly shouldn't be changed. Public education does serve a public purpose, and it has to answer to the people. We've already talked about that, that the reason we have public schools, to create thoughtful citizens and be responsible members of a community beyond career and college, and that they do benefit everybody. We also believe public education does unify our communities, and our communities are diverse, and it's the common goal and good that brings everybody together in increasingly diverse society. However, we do know that separate but equal doesn't work in public education. Separate educational facilities can be inherently unequal, and we do need to make sure that we address that issue in our struggling communities. We also believe the state has a legitimate interest in quality education. That is why this governing body exists, but there is a balance with local government, governance. As a school board member, I obviously can attest to this fact. We are very supportive of many of the Board of Education's goals. We implement them at the local level, but obviously, we need a balance when it comes to things that get handed down on us. As, again, as a board member, I'm stunned at how much our administrators have to do to comply with so many laws and mandates. It is one of the frustrations that a lot of our voters don't understand when they're wondering why a superintendent makes what they do, or why we need staff at the administrative building. It's not easy, as you all know. There's a lot that we have to do. I also want to talk briefly about the notion of consolidation. I do think that there are times probably that discussion does need to happen. I do think that's something local taxpayers should decide. They are the ones paying for the buildings. They are the ones who built the buildings. So, I think that's an important notion, even though we have the centralized system funding operating, we still are funding, you know, how we pay for our buildings. We do have a large number of school districts. There's a history to that, and there's a reason for that. Some of those reasons maybe don't exist anymore, but I do think it's important to recognize that bigger isn't always better. I come from a small school district, about 3,000 students. The folks who moved to our community intentionally choose us over a larger, very good district down the road, because they want smaller. They want accessibility. And in fact, there are some studies that show the ideal school district actually is around 3,000 students for responding to student needs and not letting students slip through the cracks. So, I think that's something we need to be very careful about. I also think a lot of those small school districts have actually led the way on shared services and privatizing some services and different things to save money, because they had to, because they have a scale issue, so they've had to lead the charge on that. I know our district's been doing that, I think, before it was in vogue to do that. So, we really, we do a lot of shared services, in fact, with our city and other districts around. So, I just think that's an important consideration that we do need to balance.
So, I'm going to switch to questions of funding, now that we're talking about governance. And I think that a lot of what we're going to say here reflects what Mr. Bean said earlier. The first general idea is that overall funding must cover the true cost of education, and a costing out study of some sort is a crucial step. Since 1994, the way I like to put it, Michigan has done its education policy inside out. We determine the bucket of funding and the streams that ran into it, and then from that, we determine what kind of education we were going to make available to our children, depending on what we could afford. Instead, it is a difficult task, but nevertheless a necessary task, for us to figure out what we want our schools to achieve, and then make sure that they have the resources to do that adequately. A first step is to get some handle on the costs and the variation in costs of what it takes to do all the things that we now expect of our K-12 schools. Legislation that would move forward such a study is currently in the State House of Representatives, and we're very interested in that. Secondly, it's important to note that the state's commitment to education funding as a share of our overall economy should be steady, but in fact, recently, it has not. As measured by state personal income, which is how we measure the overall limit on taxes through the Headley Amendment, K-12 education has lagged the economy in both good times and bad. If the state commitment to K-12 education as a share of the economy were the same in 2012 as it had been in 2002, we would have been spending $2.2 billion more on schools, or over $1,400 per student. Even including local revenues, overall spending has still failed to track the broader economy, and that's what this chart shows. And remember, that's as a percentage of whatever personal income is. So, personal income has gone up and down over the years, depending on the state of the economy. What this shows is that there has been a secular decline in the amount of our economy that we are able to commit to K-12 public education.
Could you all move quickly through your final slides, just to be fair to everybody?
Of course. Sorry, we're going to be, I'll wrap it up quickly. I must be missing a little bit, but another point is that tax policy decisions have made funding volatile and failed to track economic growth, as the chart, I think, indicated. Funding formulas must take into account differential costs. Equitable funding isn't always equal, as we know. That includes both services to pupils, and it also means facilities that are available for education. Cost of living and other factors differ across the state. Other states have figured out how to include this in their funding formulas. It's definitely something that we need to look into. Then, there are structural costs, like transportation or other issues that different districts face. These are all things that point us to the fact that a precisely equal distribution of funding per pupil, of dollars per pupil, doesn't necessarily give every child the same educational opportunity. So, we need to make adjustments that would make that possible. And finally, I would say, funding formulas have to reflect the underlying needs of students. We need to address things like the high cost of poverty. And there is a slide that you'll see in your presentation that shows that Michigan's percentage of children living in poverty has exceeded the national average and has, in fact, that gap has grown since the Great Recession started. That is an unalterable, or not unalterable, but it is a hard fact with which our local public schools are having to cope every day. Secondly, funding should completely cover special education. We have legal mandates for our local schools, for all public schools, to provide certain services to students with disabilities, and yet, we only provide a portion of the costs. This forces local districts to make a choice between meeting their legal and moral requirements to meet the service, to provide services to students with disabilities, and maintaining programming for their general education students. That doesn't make any sense. Funding formulas have to account for fixed costs. That's one of the problems with per pupil funding, is that the additional funding that you get for one more student, or the funding that you lose for one less student, doesn't reflect the actual changes in your costs. And finally, there's an option for locally voted enhancement millages, which I won't describe in detail, but a friend of mine, an economist, is a member of the Ann Arbor School Board, has been putting forward a proposal for the last few years that would essentially create a system of equalized funding for, at local option, in order to separate the willingness to support schools from the ability to support schools. So, in sum, parent view, we want to keep the public and public education. We insist that parents and citizens are owners and not customers. We insist that the resources must be adequate for the tasks we set for our schools, and we believe that resources should follow needs with the aim of equal quality for all. I think that covers it. There's information at the end. If, we'd be happy to answer any questions or engage in any further discussion, please feel free to contact us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Steve and Elizabeth, for sharing with us.
Excellent. Thank you.
Next up, we have Gary Mayr. Gary is the executive director of the Great Lakes Education Project, another active education advocacy organization dedicated to quality, choice, financing strategies they believe will be effective. Gary's been a legislative and communications advocate for 30 years, most recently at the Governor John Engler Center for Charter Schools at Central Michigan University, and has been with the Michigan Association of Public School Academy. So, thank you, Gary, for being with us and sharing perspective.
Thank you, President Austin. I will talk fast, even for me, a few minutes that we have today, and you have a copy of the presentation that's up on the board. It'll be on our website later today. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. Today's discussion is about funding. Even though GLP is primarily concerned about improving academic achievement, we may not argue that the system is broken completely, but your own stats, your own benchmarks for kids here at the board show that only 2/3 of our KH students are proficient, and only 20% of our high school graduates are career and college ready. So, if our system isn't broken, I'm not sure what it is, but it's certainly not healthy. We would want to improve academic achievement, increase accountability, and do everything we can to empower parental choice. But today's topic is funding, and so, in terms of funding, want to make sure we're talking about the big picture, $17.2 billion of operational funding in Michigan's public schools from a combination of state, local, and federal sources. This does not include hundreds of millions of dollars spent on capital. We're going to talk primarily about operational funding today. So, $17.2 billion is what we have to work with. The legislature works with $14 billion of the 17, because the legislature doesn't determine where federal aid is spent, and doesn't determine where a little less than half of locally raised property tax revenue for education is spent. So, there's a kitty for the legislature of about $14 billion. The legislature has determined that that is spent between the foundation grant, which is the primary funding stream for K-12 education, and the categoricals, or the term that we all use, and you're familiar with categoricals, or non-foundation grant spending. In a more flippant moment, we might call it something less, but we'll just refer to it as non-foundation grant spending. So, right now, if you take the foundation grant, the non-foundation grant, there's an 80/20 split between what's being invested in the per pupil allowance and what's being spent on all the other categoricals. The biggest ones are listed there, and they're, they total, again, $2.8 billion from the state's investment in categoricals. So, the promise of Proposal A, and I'm sorry that this graphically is something's been wrong in the translation or email of the PowerPoint over to you. The promise of Proposal A in 1994, while it didn't deal with capital or special education, was meant to deal with operational funding, and it shifted the balance between education being a 70/30 local investment to a 80/20 state investment. It was a complete shift in priority of funding K-12 education from local districts and property owners to the state. We collapsed many, many dozens and dozens of categoricals into a basic foundation grant, which is the, which was meant to pay for basic operational expenses of education, and we were intending to close the funding equity gap. So, back in 1994, the per pupil foundation grant was 4,200 on the minimum, 6,500 on the basic, creating a gap between the low and the high of $2,300 per pupil. What we've done over time, primarily through using the 2X equity formula in the legislature, is attempt to close that foundation grant. You can see that we've made reasonable progress in 20 years. The difference, though, today has been reduced from $2,300 per pupil to just under 1,000 per pupil. If we continue at this aggressive pace, in 2031, 17 years from today, we will have reached the promise of Proposal A, which is eliminating the equity gap per pupil in the basic operational funding. So, in today's foundation grant per pupil, the basic is 70/76, figures you've seen a lot. Currently, there are 50% of students at the basic or minimum level, I'm sorry, the minimum. The basic level or maximum contribution is 8,049 from the state, which 575,000 students, or 38% of students are there, and that creates the current equity gap of 973 per pupil. There are about 200,000 students, or 12% of students, in just under 60 districts, who are receiving more than 8,050 per pupil, but it's important that we all recognize that those districts are not receiving money at the expense of other districts in the state. They are receiving it because they have a hold harmless millage left over from Proposal A, or they receive an unnaturally high amount of local non-homestead property tax revenue that exceeds 8,049. Those districts, the hold harmless supermax districts, are not the target of any discussion about providing more equity and funding for Michigan's kids. What most people don't realize is that between the minimum and the basic, there are 157 different foundation grant amounts, and that you have neighboring districts that could be anywhere from a dollar to $973 different for no apparent reason. So, we are sitting right here in Lansing, and if we went a half a mile away today to Potter Park Zoo, we would see that they're having a field day today for kids from all over Ingham County. And there are kids from Ingham County today who are at Potter Park Zoo, watching the animals, playing and eating, and you can see them right here on the screen, Suzie, Janet, Sam, and Billy. They're from four different communities in Ingham County. They're all neighbors. Geographically, these four could live within a nine iron of each other, but they're worth four different amounts in basic operational funding. We believe it is fundamentally immoral that for basic operational funding, these four students are worth $1,000 less than each other. The voters in Michigan overwhelmingly agree, 87%, see how that says percent age? See, another glitch in the matrix. It's 27% agree, 60% strongly agree. 87% of Michigan's voters agree that we should equalize funding for basic operational expenditures between the $7,000 and $8,000 grant. Now, we can't get 87% of Michigan voters to agree that it's Tuesday, but we have 87% of Michigan voters agreeing that what we should do is provide more fair and equitable funding for basic operational expenses. I'm going to keep saying that, because it's going to come up more and more. So, we don't, we're fans of the legislature, but we also think the school aid budget needn't be written on a 309-page document. We actually believe the committee hearings would be much shorter and the process much easier if we just wrote the school aid budget on a Post-it note. And conceptually, philosophically, tongue-in-cheekily, not for public consumption and not really a serious proposal, if you wrote the school aid budget on a Post-it note, and you took all $17.2 billion available for operational funding, and you had divided it by 1.5 million K-12 kids in the state, you would have an equal funding of $11,500 per pupil. That's if you took all the money and divided it by all the kids, which we're not proposing, but some people think that's what we're proposing. What we're proposing is to create more equity in the foundation grant and still recognize special needs that are inherent in different children in different districts. We are not recommending that federal aid be touched in any way. We're not recommending that any of the local funds not currently used for the foundation grant, which are all being used for categoricals, not be touched in any way. What we are suggesting is taking the $2.8 billion in state-funded categoricals, cut that in half, and transfer $1.4 billion from the state categoricals, and move it over to the foundation grant side. That's what we're recommending. If you did that, we would go from the 80/20 mix of available discretionary funds from the foundation grant to the categoricals to a 90/10 split. It would prioritize the foundation grant as the dominant method of funding basic educational expenses in the state. And rather than have a set foundation grant that then total revenue for district goes down as enrollment declines, which is happening, and is going to continue to happen, if you set 90% of the available funds for the foundation grant, as enrollment goes down, the per pupil foundation grant would go up. And you would find that many districts who are operating good programs, who are not doing bad things for kids, but have declining enrollment and declining revenue as a result of declining enrollment, that would address this issue. And it doesn't require a massive rewrite of Proposal A. So, what we would do is provide a uniform foundation grant for basic funding. Take $12.6 billion, that would be what we're using now, plus the $1.4 billion that we've moved over from this side of the ledger to that side of the ledger. It would create a basic foundation grant of $8,250 per pupil. And I can't think of many districts who wouldn't be happy to have a basic foundation grant of $8,250 per pupil. If we did that, 95% of all the students in the state would be at that level. Now, we have 50% at the bottom, 38% between the bottom and the high, 20% above, right? This would create much more equity. Is it pure equity? No, but it's substantially better. There would still be 5% of students that would be above 8,250, the same ones who are above 8,250 today. If we did that, we'd provide more equity for what? Basic operational education. We would still leave $4.6 billion for non-foundation grant programs, $4.6 billion, and those categoricals are used for at-risk funding, special education, and a host of miscellaneous programs. Today, 63 different categorical investments in the school aid fund. Now, how are those spent? They're spent a variety of ways. Let's say, for special needs, that you were going to divide that money among, it's certainly not every child in the state, because it's targeted. Let's just say, for example, half the kids in the state were eligible for funding based on special needs from categoricals. If that were the case, the $4.6 billion we're recommending would represent $6,000 per pupil above 8,250 for special needs. So, we're not talking about treating everyone equally. We're talking about basic operational funding at 8,250, and then up to $6,000 per pupil if half the kids in the state kids in the state were eligible for categorical funding. There it is on the chart. Your average students in the state, every student in the state of Michigan would be receiving 8,250 per pupil, a dramatic increase for the vast majority of students in Michigan. At-risk students, assuming they were half the students in the state, would be receiving $14,250 on average. We think this makes sense, and we don't think that this is an unattainable public policy priority. And speaking of categoricals, the biggest categorical of the group is MIPSers. Do you want to know how we're going to move $1.4 billion from categoricals to the foundation grant? Well, here's public enemy number one. The MIPSers off the top of the school aid fund. We're all aware that since Proposal A, 100% of all retirement costs for employees were paid by participating districts. That's the way that it was. In recent years, the costs for MIPSers have grown so high, as high as 30%, 35% of payroll, that the districts screamed for relief. The legislature granted that relief in 2012. Senate Bill 1040 said to the districts, "You will be capped at 20.96% for your unfunded accrued liability." And the extra cost, whatever that is, will be borne by the state. So there's the extra cost borne by the state from fiscal '12 till fiscal '16. This year, $834 million proposed by the executive, that's your boss, Craig. And then next year, peaking at over a billion, where it's meant to stay for, I don't know, 25, 30 years at that level, not inclining anymore, meant to stay there. So what you have is a $3 billion cost for MIPSers, $2 billion borne by the districts that participate, and a billion borne by the school aid fund. The governor recommended a foundation grant increase this year through a bastardization of the 2X formula, or a modification of the 2X formula that we found inequitable, but left an equity gap of 945 per pupil. The governor also recommended $834 million off the top of the school aid fund for MIPSers, $675 million, which was necessary because of the UAL district cap of 20.96%. The governor went on to reduce the district cap by another 1.2%, saying to the districts, "The deal we cut two years ago, that's, we don't know what we're talking about. We're just going to, we're going to reduce your, limitate your equity, your liability even more by another 109 million, plus we're going to throw 50 million into the, into the school aid fund." I'm wrapping up. So our recommendation was not to do that. Our recommendation was to put nearly 400 million in the foundation grant, do it all through the 2X equity formula, which would raise the basic by 150 and the minimum by 300. That would be true equity. What you can see is that the House passed something even less funding increase for the foundation grant than the governor, but included it in 2X. Senate did a much more massive increase in the foundation grant, which we really like, all through the 2X formula. You can see the impact on the foundation, the funding equity gap between the current versus the governor, the House, and the Senate. Those will be decided in the next two weeks. Having said that, we've laid out a long-term proposal for a foundation grant of 8,250, $4.6 million for special needs, and a short-term recommendation for fiscal year '15. We are anxious for the legislature to continue that work.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
You look like one of those guys at the airport trying to send planes over to the gate the way you're.
In the case of a water landing.
You must hit a heck of a nine iron to Lansing and Holt. I hate to see what that do with a driver. Our final discussion today is Steve Cook. Steve Cook is the elected president by his peers of the Michigan Education Association. As you all know, Michigan's largest teachers' union. He's been, he was elected in 2011. He served as vice president prior and secretary treasurer since 1991. He was a professional in the Lansing schools. So thank you, Steve, for representing the MEA.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent, board members. Thanks for the opportunity to come and talk to you here for just a couple of seconds. Now, I do not, as did others, have copies, but I will be sending them to Marilyn, who will send them to you, should you ever have trouble sleeping. Yes, she will take care of it, I'm sure. Since the passage of Proposal A, it seems thousands of discussions have taken place, hundreds of forums have been held, dozens and dozens of reports have been written on school funding, but actually, very, very little has changed. What I don't want to do today, in the time that I have before you, is come off like some guy in an aluminum hat yelling at kids, "Real or imagined? They get off my lawn." I don't want to come off like that. I think Lansing has its quota of those folks, and I do not want to add to it. But what I do want to do is take a large step back and look at how we began and how we are kind of auguring in with respect to public education and funding. How we arguably went from one of the finest education systems in the United States to where we are now, which I think was, I think we can all agree, we're no longer the leader. School funding is less secure today than it has ever been. School districts have very little idea from one year to the next what their funding levels from the state are going to be, or even when they'll receive it. What new hoops are they going to have to jump through to receive their state support? What new strings are going to be attached from year to year? Anymore, school districts don't need compliance officers. They really need kind of crystal balls to figure out what next year is going to bring. I think if we're going to be honest with ourselves for just a second, we have to acknowledge that there is simply too many people and private corporations making far too much money off the public schools with very little student learning to show for it. True reforms to improve education have, for some time in this state, taken a backseat to political considerations and politically inspired reforms. Data is ignored, research is dismissed, but the politics keep coming. For example, 20 years ago, Michigan was sold the idea of charter schools. We were told that they would provide a guiding light of educational and learning advancement. They would be laboratories that would demonstrate to the rest of us new techniques in the development and delivery of education. Well, after 20 years, we're spending $800 million a year on charter schools, $5.6 billion in the last seven. Michigan leads the nation in the number of for-profit charter schools at 80%, far more than any other state. But the real question is, have they provided the groundbreaking innovations that were promised 20 years ago? That's really the question. The fact is, though, that every credible piece of research shows that, at best, charter schools are no better than traditional public schools. All we've done is spend 20 years and billions of dollars on a parallel system of public education, except that this new system is primarily run for profit. Now, before you think MEA has a bias against charter schools, think again. The Michigan Education Association represents charter schools. What we're trying to do here is take a step back and look at the situation we find it, and try to determine if charter schools are really worth the amount of time, the effort, the resources we've expended. Do they come close to the promise that was made 20 years ago, and do they have the realistic potential to, in the for-profit charter movement, to really become what they were promised to be? Education Trust recently published a report that was highly critical of the overreliance in Michigan on charters and cybers and any other bright shiny object and simplistic answers to address the issue of education. Now, we come to online full-time K-12 schools. Now, they're a relatively new phenomenon in Michigan, but we have certainly been given all the, but they have certainly been given all the encouragement and support possible to become a fixture on the educational scene in Michigan. Again, in the face of data and research that shows of all the choices available, it provides the fewest educational benefits. Online education has been around for some time, but mainly as a means for students to pick up coursework that, for whatever reason, was not available in their local district. Now, MEA supported that so long as the coursework is developed and monitored by certificated teachers. But now comes K-12 Incorporated, arguably the nation's largest provider of full-time K-12 online instruction. They are for-profit. They're listed on the X stock exchange. In 2013, Michigan has spent $60 million so far in this new fledgling business called online instruction, more than $42 million of it going to the for-profit K-12 Incorporated. But the question to be asked again, like with charter schools, what's the product like? What is the benefit? Are students learning? While they haven't been in Michigan, we don't think long enough to perhaps offer a definitive judgment, how other organizations view them, may provide a view into what Michigan might expect in the future. You're probably not aware, but in order to be eligible to play college sports in either Division I or Division II, incoming freshmen must establish their academic eligibility, including that they are high school graduates. In April of, just a month ago, the NCAA added to their banned list of online schools 24 K-12 Incorporated schools, that if a student only claims to be academic, only claims their academic eligibility, is a diploma from K-12, they are ineligible to play college sports. These are K-12 schools in California, Colorado, Georgia, Nevada, Ohio, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, and Washington State. K-12 Incorporated in Michigan, the Michigan Virtual Charter Academy, is currently under extended evaluation by the NCAA. Potential student athletes are required to submit student-specific documentation for all coursework taken. This is something that has never happened to any public school or even charter school. But has any of this, or the information that was available even before we jumped into the deep end with cyber schools, has it even served as a speed bump for those who cheerlead for greater cyber school expansion? The silence is deafening. The only thing we know for sure is the schools are still in operation and they still receive public funds. Proposal A certainly changed the way we finance schools. Property taxes were reduced, and the primary funding source was moved to the sales tax. As most of you know, MEA opposed Proposal A. We didn't like the idea of basing school funding on what amounts to a regressive tax, but mainly, we felt allowing politics to decide whether and how much schools would be funded by the legislature was a profound mistake. My guess is, we wouldn't be here today if Proposal A that we thought we adopted was really working. But Proposal A funds education, of course, using the sales tax. The interesting thing is that even before Proposal A passed, there were bills stacked up in the legislature to begin exempting items from having to pay that tax. Thus far, there have been at least 55 exemptions from sales tax signed into law, from anything coming out of a vending machine, to airplanes, commercial laundry, commercial advertising, and the buying and selling of gold. They're all tax exempt in addition to numerous other things. Even before its adoption, there were those working overtime to begin reducing the amount of funds going to education through exemptions to the sales tax. And even though we have mentioned this problem more than once, there are still efforts today to further exempt items from the sales tax. As you'll see from the Drake Report, assuming you get a complete copy, the school aid fund has been reduced $5.5 billion since 1994 due to changes in income, use taxes, and the sales tax exemptions. But they have all hit the school aid fund. For public schools, it's like getting hit by a bus and then backed over it again. Not only is the pool of available funding being reduced as fast as possible through tax changes, but now higher education is being funded through the K-12 school aid fund to the tune of $1.25 billion since 2012, 2013. And a growing amount of even that funding that's left is that falls on funding charters and cyber schools and other experiments that are currently existing in Michigan. I'd like to leave you today with some profound recommendations for change to our current system, but I have to be realistic. There's too much money, too many vested in keeping things as they are, and too many not willing to do the homework necessary to achieve real meaningful change in our education system anytime soon. But, folks, we have to start somewhere, and today is as good a place, and here and now is as good a place as any. We'd like to see greater accountability applied to the charter and cyber schools. Not greater accountability, I think we've done, I think, a fairly good job of making those schools accountable the same manner we do in the public schools. There are some inherent differences in that. But I also know that the way things are today will not be the way things are tomorrow, but I think that has to be in the forefront of everyone's mind. We have to hold them as accountable as we would the public schools. We need to stop cutting the funds available to the school aid fund. If someone wants something to be exempt, if a tax must be changed, if higher education is going to be funded from the school aid fund, those responsible for making that determination should commit themselves to finding replacement revenue for the school aid fund cut. And that replacement revenue, by the way, should not come from other sources of education funding. We simply have to insist that the state's support of education be increased. In 2012, 2013, Michigan ranked 42nd in public school revenue per student and 46th as in public school revenue as a percentage of combined state and local revenue. In other words, 45 states use a greater share of state and local revenue on schools than we do here in Michigan, 45 other states. The school foundation allowance is lower now than it was four years ago, and what small increases districts have seen in the last few years have come directly from shifting the costs of pensions and health care to school employees. These cost shifts have generated an amount equal to $363 per pupil per year. Now, if the governor's proposal is adopted for next year, the foundation allowance will have gone up only $317 since 2011, 2012. In other words, school employees themselves have funded the increases in the foundation allowance since 2011, 12, and 2014, 15. We have given up more than the state has provided the school aid fund. Also looking back 20 years, we wish someone, anyone, instead of spending their every effort, resource, and capital to promote, encourage, and adopt every, in our view, bad idea to reform education, had they just put one-tenth of that effort in trying to improve the existing infrastructure and system in a truly bipartisan manner, involving teachers and their associations and other stakeholders, maybe we wouldn't be in the mess we're in today. At the end of the day, if you believe higher class sizes improve education and relying on cuts to school staff to finance schools, demeaning and attacking teachers and our rights as employees, and diminishing teachers' ability to impact education at the local level, and wiping entire school districts off the map, art, music, and physical education disappearing, seeing students actually going backwards in terms of growth and learning after 20 years of politically inspired tinkering, heavily investing as a state in failed experiments, watching the list of deficits grow. If all of this makes sense to you, and you want to see more, then yes, you have to believe there's enough financial support in the system right now for public education. But if you don't, if you think we can do a better job, then your answer is no, and we are on the wrong track. It will no doubt take a few profiles and courage to help get us on the right track, but it will never, ever be sooner than right now to start and to even begin to get us back on the right track. But let me tell you, folks, and you know this, countless students and their parents are counting on us, not just you, but myself and everybody else in this room. We cannot afford to let them down. I wish you tremendous success in your effort, John, Mr. Superintendent. Anything this organization, my organization, can do to assist in that, we're more than willing to step up and do it. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. I'd say thanks to all the presenters. We are eager to hear from other organizations over the next few meetings, and if you're at all interested in sharing your perspective in person, we'll do our best to accommodate it. In writing, we certainly will post the presentations. All that we heard today will be available on the website. And then we all, and certainly the state board, need to turn to make sense of what we're hearing and what kinds of recommendations, ideas for how we do better. We want to end up with. But I really want to encourage all education stakeholders in Michigan to try to wrestle thoughtfully with what we're learning and hearing and the different perspectives and the facts, and come to your own sense of direction on what would be the best thing for us to do to improve education and work on finance issues that we face. So thank you all very much for coming.
Before we go to our next item, I'd like to join in that. Did I tell you that Did I tell you that we had four impressive presentations, and they certainly were that? It's really going to help us work through this issue, so thanks for taking your time today. If Vanessa and Brandy Johnson could join us at the table, I'll do an intro in just
Hello, Brandy.
Hello.
Are ya?
Some questions today?
We're pretty good at passing.
If you want to keep four presentations to an hour.
We're pretty good at passing.
Thank you.
There's something we're good at.
She lost me the last third, I just... What to do with Nipser's was basic.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, why don't she start?
There you go, Michelle. You're in charge.
Oh, I am.
Wow, that was, John, but that was a good effort. It all got within that hour or so, so we were pretty successful.
Although I didn't understand half of it.
The next item...
Where's Steve?
I think I'll give Board members a quick back.
Good morning, John.
She already gave the...
She's like, "Good morning, Dan."
Good morning, Dan.
Hey, how are you?
Well, thank you, and yourself?
Great, thank you. Love the spring colors.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hey, good morning. You've got spring on too.
Yes.
Cassandra, yeah. Spring is blooming.
I'm going to get you like a pink tie or something.
I was going to say, something, right?
Morning, Dan.
Good morning, how are you?
Ah, not bad at all.
Fair cut.
Yeah, every six, eight weeks, whether you need it or not.
It doesn't keep...
You go from Albert Einstein to Dan Varne, almost overnight.
This is low maintenance. Everybody should like this.
I should.
He's an ROTC.
Is it low maintenance really interesting?
Mine's really sharp.
I close my eyes.
I know, it's...
I'm not seeing it.
It's just another password.
That's my next step.
Sorry to make you wait, Brandy and Vanessa.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Go ahead, I'll give you a glowing introduction myself.
It might bring everybody back, but we've lost our suit, so here we are.
Wait, remember that.
Yeah.
Where are the groupies?
Nobody sees you.
You know, we shouldn't have a mosh pit.
Oh, I don't know.
Could be located like, right here.
Sounds dangerous.
I love the exchange about the fat lady and the...
I couldn't top yours, so that's why I didn't go any farther.
I had to do it.
Oh, that was so funny.
I'm good, how are you?
Oh, yeah.
Time here.
Sure, thank you.
My son got out of the car and said, what was it? It was some Israeli game. Danny got in the car and his leg was all scraped up, and he told me he'd been in some sort of pit, and I thought, I need to just immerse myself. I just need to go to the school for a day and figure out the vocabulary.
What they, first of all?
Yeah.
Brandy and Vanessa, thanks for your patience.
I don't know, I've got a little bit of time.
To set the stage for this, in order to achieve the State Board and the department's goal of graduating all of our students' career in college and community-ready, that was a wonderful addition to our mission last year at our retreat. A comprehensive plan to support post-secondary transitions has been created by the department with great assistance and partnership with the Michigan College Access Network. And I thought I'd just, this is, I get a lot of emails that are unsolicited, obviously.
No.
Most are good, though. I mean, but here's one that I just thought I'd highlight because it was recent from St. Clair ISD. It was from Dan DeGraw and said, "Mike, let me share a success story of what can happen when schools focus on directing students to post-secondary education." He pointed out that in five years, Port Huron High School has gone from last in its county with only 46% of their students going on to either a two or four-year college to 71% in 2013. It's an increase of 50% in five years. They also are by far the poorest high school with 50%, 57% of the students eligible for free or reduced lunch. Their cross-town rival, as he calls it, Port Huron Northern, is at 69%. This just shows things can be done to get us in the right direction. And today, to talk about our plan for that and kind of our partnership with Brandy Johnson, who I think is just outstanding, we spent some time in our Supes Group with her. I had a chance to talk at her conference. And then our own Vanessa Kiesler, who's just fantastic in this regard, many regards, but also in this one, I'd like to turn it over to them at this point.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for having both of us here to present today on MDE's approach to post-secondary transitions. And as Mike said, this has been a great opportunity for the department to partner more specifically with the Michigan College Access Network, under the direction of Brandy Johnson as their executive director. I think we've both been working in somewhat the same space for a number of years, but this gave us an opportunity to sit down and really talk about how to be very strategic and intentional in how we work together going forward. So in terms of our vision for post-secondary transitions, as the department, we support career and college readiness through K-12 education. Now, our mission is to prepare students in the K-12 system, but that's not enough. There is that transition to what comes after the K-12 education. So being ready is clearly an important part of that, but being intentional about how we support that transition to college, to careers, and to community. And making it a specific goal of the department that any child in Michigan can have access to post-secondary credit options while still in high school, as a way to facilitate that transition, as well as to help kind of close the gap of access to higher education opportunities for students in Michigan. And so, there's current work around this, and then there's specific new partnerships. We wanted to pause for a minute and talk a bit about college. And you notice that in our, in the department's mission statement, it does say, ready, all students can, all Michigan students graduate ready for college, careers, and community. And we do use the word "college," so let's talk about what we mean by "college." We join MCAN in supporting the definition of college as, using it interchangeably with post-secondary education and higher education. So referring to all education that occurs after high school, or a high school equivalent. So this includes, you know, credit and credential-bearing vocational education, associate's degree, and bachelor's degree. So when we say "college" is for everyone, we do mean "college" is for everyone, but that "college" doesn't mean the same thing for everyone.
Yeah, that's exactly right, and I think that's something that people get tripped up on, is that college is a four-year university. So I want to be clear, when we call ourselves the Michigan College Access Network, we are not the Michigan University Access Network. A university is a great option for many students, but the bottom line is that a high school diploma or its equivalency is simply not enough for the 21st century economy, and that everyone needs another piece of paper beyond high school, whether it is a educational certificate, an associate degree, or beyond.
So in today's presentation, we do want to go through some of what the department is currently doing and some of our planned work. We do have a portion of the presentation where Brandy will speak about what MCAN has been doing, and then we do want to call out the partnership between MDE and MCAN as we go forward.
So MCAN has adopted what we call Goal 2025, which is a big goal of increasing the percentage of Michigan adults with high quality degrees or credentials to 60% by the year 2025. You'll notice our clever logo, which I did not design, has the G and the O in the, and the A in the word "goal" is a six and a zero and a percent sign. So this is our North Star goal, to help more Michigan students achieve higher and ultimately get a degree or credential. The 60% wasn't chosen out of the blue, it's really benchmarked to the projected labor market demands. Tony Carnavale out of the Georgetown Center for Education and the Workforce projects that 62% of all jobs in Michigan will require post-secondary education in the very short term. And that's 62% of all jobs, not just new jobs. This is some really compelling earnings and unemployment data, broken down by educational attainment level. I, I hope this is a no-brainer, but the more you learn, the more you earn, as we say, for those people with a high school diploma or less than a high school diploma, unemployment rates are significantly higher than the national average, and earnings are significantly lower. For every stairtop step in attainment, this is both true in Michigan and nationally, the likelihood that you'll be unemployed goes down pretty significantly, and the likelihood that you'll be making a living wage goes up pretty significantly. This is Michigan-specific data, and this is using 2012 inflation-adjusted dollars. The median income for a high school graduate in Michigan is just over $25,000, and the median income for a bachelor's degree holder is $47,000. This is poverty and unemployment rates. Again, this is even more dramatic, and this is Michigan-specific data. For those people in Michigan without a high school diploma, their unemployment rate is 30, I'm sorry, is 23%, which is pretty incredible. And those living at or below the poverty line amongst folks with less than a high school diploma is at 30%. Again, it's a really, pretty compelling stair-step climb. The more that you earn in terms of educational attainment, the more likely it is that you will both have a job and one that allows you to live above the poverty line. And then finally, this is maybe the most compelling data we've ever seen about the ties between economic development and educational attainment. This shows job growth since 1989, and basically it says 100% of all job growth that we have seen in this country is due to those with associate degrees and bachelor's degrees. We've seen job loss since 1989 pretty significantly for those with a high school diploma or a GED as their terminal credential. And then just looking at the far right-hand side of that graph, where the gray bar is, and then to the right of that, that's just looking at the recession that we experienced from 2008 to 2010, and then the subsequent recovery. Believe it or not, despite every headline you would read and every news story you would see, you would think that we lost a ton of jobs in this country during the recession. We did lose a ton of jobs, but those were jobs that were held by those with high school diplomas as a terminal credential. During the recession, we actually saw a slight job gain for those with bachelor's degrees, and then since the recovery, we've seen pretty steady and significant gain amongst those with bachelor's degrees and associate degrees. While even during a recovery where, you know, we see more economic growth, we've seen additional declines in the number of jobs available to those with a high school diploma or less. So I think the economic data is pretty clear and compelling. There's not a lot of political disagreement about the benefits economically, but I think it's also important to point out the social and community benefits that accrue with higher education. Part of MCAN's vision statement is that MCAN, that college is a public good. So the benefits are not just accrued at the individual level, but at the community and at the state level. Those communities and states with higher educational attainment levels experience higher tax revenues, are less dependent on public support and income support programs. People are more likely to be insured, have citizens, they're most, more likely to volunteer and vote. They are more likely to exercise regularly, read to their children. So there's all these community benefits that have a multiplier effect beyond the individual and the family that gets the post-secondary degree. So I didn't say very much about MCAN. We are a nonprofit organization based in Lansing that serves, serves as an intermediary or hub for college access policy and programs in the state. We were founded in 2010. As we look to increase college enrollment persistence and completion, we've always looked at it through this lens of really complicated barriers. If there was a magic bullet solution to college access, we would have found it a long time ago. There isn't one because of the barriers being so complex. So in order to help our brains deal with this problem a little bit more clearly, we've broken it up into four kind of distinct buckets of barriers that students, especially low-income students and first-generation college-going students, have to overcome in order to enroll in college, persist, and complete. So the first is social capital, which is really related to aspirations. If students are never told that they are college material, that they should go to college, that they don't aspire to go to college, they won't. Second is academic preparation, and that's really being prepared for post-secondary education without the need for remedial education, so being able to immediately enter college without needing any developmental coursework. Third is college knowledge or navigating the process. This is really the logistical barriers to college. No offense to my higher ed colleagues at the table, but navigating admissions and financial aid processes on a college campus is really complicated if no one in your family has ever done it themselves. It's really intimidating, and students need better advising and guidance as it relates to identifying a career goal, mapping that to the program of study needed to enter that career, and then mapping that to the programs and institutions, and hopefully in Michigan that offer those. And then lastly, affordability, and this is the most often cited barrier to a college. So not only do we work to make college more affordable by advocating for financial aid for students, we also help to kind of break down the myths that college is completely unaffordable for low-income families. And as we talk about the partnership between MDE and MCAN, Vanessa and I just wanted to point out that, and this has happened as we've started to work together more closely over the last couple of months, it's become abundantly obvious that MDE's sweet spot, so to speak, is the academic preparation. Everything you do really helps more students graduate prepared for post-secondary study. And MCAN wants to do more to lean on MDE to help provide students with those supports in that academic bucket. Conversely, I think MDE has realized that MCAN's sweet spot is that college knowledge, navigating the process, and helping students actually make that jump to enrollment. And so likewise, MDE wants to help push more of your constituents to use MCAN's tools and resources. These are the five strategies that are outlined in our strategic plan. I'm just going to go them, go through them really quickly so you know what MCAN does to help move toward our Goal 2025. Our first strategy is ELCAN development. ELCAN is an acronym for Local College Access Network. It's something that we have invented, and an ELCAN is, at its core, a community-based college access strategy or a coordinating body for a community. So the closest analogy I can sort of think of that's relatable to especially this audience is the relationship between ECIC and the Great Start Collaboratives. MCAN serves as that hub, and our local networks provide that regional coordination. We have about 50 ELCANS in the state. In the annual report that I gave you, all of our ELCANS are listed on page eight and nine with a map. Each one has a leadership team of high-level CEO-level leaders from K-12, higher education, business, philanthropy, the nonprofit sector, and government. They commit to increasing college readiness, enrollment, and completion through collaborative action, data-driven decision-making, and a methodology of continuous improvement. ELCANS don't necessarily start new programs to help more students go to college, they take existing assets and make them more efficient and effective. These are the types of functions that ELCANS do. They agree on a vision for their community, they set goals, and track their progress on their goals transparently. In just a moment, Mike stole my thunder, I'll talk about St. Clair County as one great example of an ELCAN. They work to align their existing efforts to those common goals and metrics, and implement action plans on their community's highest need priorities that are very localized, and ultimately, ultimately hold themselves jointly accountable for results. It's not K-12's fault for not preparing students for college, it's not the college's fault for not helping them persist, it's not the parents' fault. It is a jointly, a sort of joint accountability framework that says, whatever, wherever we are, whatever our baseline is in terms of college-going rates, we are committed to moving the needle on those goals together. These are the types of goals that ELCANS track on their dashboard. Again, in the annual report, you can see the statewide data on page two and three on many of these metrics. many of these metrics, but each LCAN is required to decide on a set of metrics that will help focus them on the types of data points that they want to see move in their community. So things like college aspiration by the eighth grade, percent of students meeting the ACT college-ready benchmark, percent of students enrolling in college within 12 months of high school graduation, percent of seniors completing the FAFSA by the end of their senior year. And then obviously, those are sort of readiness and enrollment metrics, then looking at persistence and completion metrics. Are they accumulating credits, staying in college, completing a degree or credential? And then finally, hopefully, staying in Michigan to improve our educational attainment rate. So LCAN Development, like I said, is our primary strategy. We spend most of our time and energy helping organize communities around this agenda. But in addition, there's four other smaller strategies, but ones that we have, that we think will have a big impact. First is professional development, specifically of school counselors, but also other direct-service providers that help advise students on the college-going process. We noticed a rather large gap in the offering of training, really comprehensive training on how to be a good college counselor, a good college advisor, and a post-secondary planner. Just yesterday, we graduated about 100 school counselors through a comprehensive course designed by MCAN and endorsed them as MCAN-certified college advisors in their buildings, and we're incredibly proud of them, and we're offering that again. And just to give you a sense, we could only have the capacity to help 100 school counselors get through the course. We announced the second year of the course, within 36 hours, we had a waiting list of 40 counselors. So we had 140 counselors demand this course within 36 hours. I think it's a real, it's real proof that counselors don't receive this training in their graduate programs and really need more training to feel confident in advising students on making one of the biggest decisions of their lives. We also are the hub for a couple of statewide initiatives that I want to point out. I call this sort of our triad of events for the senior year in high school buildings. We've helped about 200 seniors, I mean, I'm sorry, 200 high schools and their seniors implement these events. You could think of them as pep rallies, or assemblies, or really public events that help build a college-going culture in a building. It starts with College Application Week in November, where we challenge high schools to help every single senior, not just some seniors, but every single senior, complete at least one college application during the school day, during the school week, and we get colleges to waive their application fees during that week. That's followed up in February by some sort of College Goal Sunday event that's led by EdUGuide that helps students and families complete the FAFSA to unlock the very valuable Pell Grant and access to federally guaranteed loans. And then lastly, Decision Day, which happens at the beginning of May, just like an NCAA Signing Day. It's a big pep rally for students to declare, not just student athletes, but students where they are going to college. It got a lot of press last week, and we were really thrilled that so many high schools decided to partner with us on College Decision Day. And then lastly, I'll talk about the College Advising Corps, which is the logo in the bottom-right corner. This is a program that MCAN attracted to Michigan about four years ago. It is analogous to Teach for America, but for college advising. So we recruit, hire, train, and place recent college graduates as full-time college advisors to supplement high school counselors in high-need high schools. And we have about 40 of those young people serving all across the state, from Detroit to the U.P., to Holland and Grand Rapids, supplementing the work of school counselors by having a dedicated person who, only job, and it's a really cost-effective strategy, only job is to help students with ACT retake, college applications, FAFSA, scholarship, campus visits, campus representatives coming to the high school. And it's shown some really dramatic enrollment gains in our high schools. Including Port Huron High School. So then this is where I'll close and turn it back over to Vanessa, but we just got the most incredible data that I think I've ever seen in, you know, or I should say, in the last four years working in this space. We haven't seen a community do quite what St. Clair County just did. They started percolating on this idea of establishing some sort of college access program anchored by the St. Clair County RISA, but in close partnership with St. Clair County Community College and the St. Clair County Community Foundation to create some sort of college access program. MCAN kind of came onto the scene in 2010 to help them organize it, and the first thing we did was make them look at their baseline data. So this is sort of complicated, but if you follow with me, this is the class of 2008. The class of 2008, as an ISD-wide, had a 56% college enrollment rate, which means 56% of seniors enrolled in a college two or four-year within 12 months of high school graduation. I just plotted each high school's enrollment rate based on their free and reduced lunch status, sort of on the x-axis, and their college enrollment on the y-axis. As you can see, there's almost a perfect correlation between the rich schools having higher college-going rates and the poor schools not having higher college-going rates. It's pretty obvious and really what you would expect. Port Huron High is the poorest school in the county, the most diverse school in the county, and it was the only school in the county that had fewer than 50% of their students going to college. Marysville is sort of on the other end of the spectrum, highest income, one of the highest-income communities, had over a 70% college-going rate. We had them look at this data and really prioritize action. Where are the needs? Where are the gaps? What should they do? These are the types of actions that they took with MCAN technical assistance, but really led by their incredible leadership. So their leadership team, they call themselves Know How to Go St. Clair County, set goals, started to use this data from the National Student Clearinghouse to drive all of their decision-making, constantly benchmarking using data, started figuring out where they were duplicating resources, where there were gaps, how they could focus their resources to highest priorities. They built new partnerships with community-based organizations and new partnerships between the ISD and the school district, and between the ISD and the community college, and between the ISD and the community foundation, and dedicated resources to college access activities, including hiring new personnel. They put two full-time advisors at Port Huron High School to do the college advising work. They hired dedicated folks out of the ISD to be consultants to the school districts as it related to higher education. And the results came out just a couple of weeks ago, and Dan DeGrove, who's the superintendent, called me, and then I said, "You immediately need to call Mike and tell him this." And this is what happened. So they went from a 56% college enrollment rate overall in 2008 to a 66% college-going rate in 2013, so overall in the county, raised enrollment rate by 10 percentage points in just five years. And you'll notice, income is really no longer an indicator for college-going rates of students. The most dramatic increase in college enrollment I've ever seen, and I've been doing this for now six years, kind of studying college access in Michigan, Port Huron High School went from a 46-ish% college enrollment rate, and in five years, now has a 71% college enrollment rate. And if you notice, the difference between Port Huron High and Marysville in 2008, really dramatic difference. Port Huron High is now within one percentage point of Marysville High School, the highest-income school in the county. And this was 100% based on dedicated leadership, coordinating a strategy, and really focusing and dedicating resources with support from MCAN, but like I said, they should take most of the credit for it. So all the boats lifted, so to speak, but the communities that needed the most support rose the most.
So I think, I appreciate that story, and I appreciate the, I guess, story is the wrong word, that example of how we can really make things different for the students in Michigan who we most need to make this different for. And on a kind of a personal note, I just want to say, I think both Brandy and I share, and many of you probably share, a passion about ensuring greater access to post-secondary options for more students in Michigan. A lot of Michigan students are prepared, they may even have high expectations, but we're not, they're not, they're not making the transition the way we need them to, which is why we want to be more intentional about that transition. And the personal note comes in, I've shared this with many of you, but for me, education and that transition to higher ed and the support that I received from my community to do that was critically important for me, but I know we don't do that for all Michigan students the way that I was able to enjoy. And so being from a low-income family, kind of feeling like I got lucky to get the right people in my lives at the right time, how do we make it less about luck and more about a system that supports this for our students? So moving on to kind of how does MDE support the work, the transition to college? Like Brandy said, like I said, our current work really largely focuses on ensuring readiness. You know, transition is good, but if you can't stay there because you're not prepared, then that's a failed promise too. And so that's central to the department's mission, is making sure Michigan students can succeed when they leave the K-12 system. But we do a lot of other things as well. I would say the bulk of our work, specific work within the department around transition to college, is within our career technical education focus. And we have, that could be a whole presentation, so I won't go through all of it, but we have a large suite of things we do around our career technical education to help with those transitions. So things like articulation agreements, so the credits you earn in high school transfer, direct credit agreements, rigorous programs of study. And we've also begun, we're really excited about this, we'll have data on this soon, an intervention pilot to increase college application and college-going rates, and that was in partnership with MCAN. So using the spring administration of the high school assessment, we did a couple of things to try to get more kids to actually send their score reports to colleges. A number of Michigan students were not even sending score reports to colleges from the ACT, and then we're going to do some targeted outreach to lower-income students to drive them to the information on MCAN's website to hopefully increase eventual college-going. We would like to expand the number of these specific interventions we do, and that, we'll talk some more about that. I did want to talk more about this post-secondary credit options in high school. Again, the department feels like this is a point of leverage for us because it happens within the K-12 space. So we, our goal is that any Michigan student who wants the opportunity to earn an associate's degree while still in high school should have that opportunity, and any Michigan student who wants to earn post-secondary credits while in high school should be able to earn those credits. We have a current range of methods for this. So we actually have eight different ways that students can access this. We want to increase usage of these versus new methods. I mean, there may be new methods out there, but we'd like to make sure that everybody's taking full advantage of these. So these includes advanced placement and international baccalaureate courses, dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment, enhanced dual enrollment systems. What that is, is a structured program of dual enrollment that happens earlier with a series of supports so that students, dual enrollment can be kind of a go-to-the-college-and-take-your-course, which can work well for some students, but some students need more structure. And then on the kind of most intensive intervention end of our spectrum are our early-middle colleges, programs, and schools. And as a side note, St. Clair County has a very successful early-middle college. And so I think it shows how these strategies working in concert can really be part of changing things about access to college and successful transition for Michigan students. We, here's where we're at right now with early-middle colleges. We're going to put some specific efforts in this in the next year. We have 23 of our 28 community colleges currently involved in an early-middle college. Let me back up and say, an early-middle college is an experience where students can stay for an additional year, five years of high school, and by the time they graduate, have the opportunity to earn an associate's degree, a certificate of completion, or 60 transferable college credits. So we have these going on around the state. We have 20, like I said, 23 of our 28 community colleges are involved, four of our public universities and three private colleges. We have 14 ISDs who offer these schools and programs, and we have 25 districts. So we would like to expand these numbers in the next years. So we set some goals. We're all about goals, we're all about metrics, right? We'd like to increase the number of community colleges participating in the early-middle colleges. By the end of 2015, 16, we'd like to see all 28 community colleges participating. We would like to increase the number of universities that participate, two additional each year. There's some work we need to do with universities around this, you know, cost of tuition and things like that, but the department's going to put some effort into specific outreach on that. We'd like to increase the number of ISDs and districts who are offering this, so increase that by 25% each year. So that'd be roughly six more districts next year and three more ISDs. We do also want to target this based on geographical representation. If you go back to the goal, if the goal is that every Michigan student has access, we know there might be holes in the state right now where you couldn't do this as much as you might want to. So some of where we, where we do our outreach will be based on when we lay it all on the map and figure out where the holes are. We're coming up to another application round, so we'll know who our new early-middle colleges are in about a month, and after that, we'll figure out our specific, not our targets, but our specific areas. And then we'd like to really spend a good deal of time increasing awareness around these eight different options. Some of them, you don't, there's a lot lighter touch. Early-middle college is a very specific strategy, it's very exciting, but it's not appropriate for every student. And so are we ensuring that districts understand how to leverage the suite of options to give all of their kids access to these types of credit while still in high school? Here's our emerging work. So we are, as we've already said now seven times in this presentation, we're partnering with MCAN more intentionally. Specifically, we were going to work with them to put the MCAN's kind of suite of resources into especially our priority schools, our focus high schools, as well as, we'd like to do this in high schools and deficit districts, because this is something we can do to increase the college-going for the kids who are there, but also the attractiveness of those schools as places where people want to send their students. You know, parents want their kids to be able to successfully transition to college, and so helping these schools be places where that happens will be important, as well as changing the trajectory for the kids who are in our most targeted schools. We want to increase our focus on counselors. We do support and encourage all counselors to participate in the MCAN training, and again, they have a capacity issue, they're already maxed, so maybe we can look at that some more. But we also have started a study to determine in a bit more, a bit more comprehensive fashion, what is the issue with counselors in Michigan? Not to say there's an issue with counselors, but what policy lever do we want to pull? Is it, is it a ratio issue? Is it a distribution issue? Is it a time allocation issue? Or is it a training issue? We suspect it's probably a combination of the three, but we would like to do some work to understand that so we can articulate a policy direction based on that. Increased partnership with advanced placement, international baccalaureate, so things like recognition events and looking at those data at a state level to hold us accountable on access, and particularly the opportunity gap. And then we also are beginning an evaluation of the Education Development Plan. That is that individualized education plan every student is supposed to have. It's in statute, but we want to understand how it's being used and its effectiveness so that, that's ideally where students articulate a career direction and go toward it, but we're not sure, we're not sure if it's doing what it's intended to do or how to improve it, so we're going to look into that. Transition to career. Our current work, again, our career technical education-based initiatives really support transition into career, so work-based learning and internships and all of the suite of things we do around career tech. We partner with MEDC on things like career jumpstart and career liaisons, and we sit on cross-agency collaborations and board memberships, like the Governor's Talent Investment Board. Our emerging work, we have kind of two big pieces. We're partnering with the Workforce Development Agency and Department of Human Services to support the Jobs for America's Graduates Program. We would like to direct this toward our deficit districts or our priority schools, and we want to look at how seat-time waivers can be used to support or facilitate more internships and apprenticeships. Right now, they're largely used for online learning, but we think there's a broader range of application for them. Transition to community, we certainly support this as a goal. Our specific work around it, the special education transition work, there's a whole stream of work there to ensure that those students can transition into their community. We support JROTC as a state-approved CTE program. We put military service under a community. Actually, we weren't sure if that was career or community, it's kind of both, but it definitely seems like a service to the community, so we put it there. And then dropout prevention. That's the other kind of big element to our stool. You can't transition to college if you don't graduate from high school. So how do we specifically increase our focus on dropout prevention? We already have the superintendent's dropout challenge, but we are expanding that work with a new early warning indicator system, and then again, that partnership with Workforce Development Agency and DHS on the Jobs for America's Graduates. Finally, and I'll kind of go quickly through this, we use data to support transitions. And I think as Brandy and I were preparing for this, we talked about the power of the National Student Clearinghouse data and the power of the data in a place like Port Huron. When you see just where things are and then you can set trajectories, you can be more intentional about changing it. So in partnership with the Center for Educational Performance and Information, we do a number of data things. We have a post-secondary education data here at the state on enrollment persistence, remediation through the National Student Clearinghouse, and the Student Transcript Academic Record Repository System. We have an e-transcript initiative where kids can send their transcripts to colleges through electronically, so no more kind of go-to-your-guidance officer and get a paper copy and send it on. And we use this data for all of our legislative and federal reporting, but also for program improvement, our metrics to track our achievement gap closure, and research on effectiveness of our programs and policies. We have some new work that we're moving into, expanding data collection into employment and wage information, and then really developing new metrics, kind of like the ones that the LCANs use, to hold ourselves accountable on the success of students' transitions at the state level. And that is where we will end for today. Thank you for having us.
Before questions, can I just mention that, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, I'm going to look for more opportunities to tell the board a little bit about the work of a state of a state superintendent, given the work you're going to be doing over the next months with my retirement in '15. And I'm surprised as people are calling me about this position, and some have heard, when I do my report in the afternoon, the last two times, I'm talking a little more nitty-gritty about what the job does. I'm stunned that, I was act-, I'm actually stunned by people in the field that don't realize this is most of what we do, is work through issues like this together. I mean, my, my sweet spot for that is usually on Fridays, we reserve every Friday for these kind of meetings to work through issues that others have, have done a lot of pre-work on. But it, I don't know why, I guess, some people think it's symbolic position, I guess, and others think it's just that thing that you do in public once in a while when you give a speech. But it's really this, and it's really the exciting part of the job. I mean, the team we have here is just fantastic, and then figuring out partnerships with people like Brandy. And, and it really takes a lot of things that John and others of you regularly talk about with the college and career ready. I mean, we're more focused here on that than I think it's, it's clear that we are, until you see a presentation like this. So we're happy to kind of partner on the presentation, and, um, I know it's a big deal to the board, and, uh, appreciate your, your vision for that and the guidance that you provided us. Last year's retreat in particular, I think we got to a lot of that. So, comments, questions? John, Dan, Richard?
Appreciate your comments. This is a big deal, and it is, I think most of you know, an important, one of my favorite agendas, but I really appreciate both of you and your teams, but your personal commitment and hard work to blow more effective life into this agenda. Personally, and, and the teams and staff that I know you both, uh, work well. It's, it's, it's pretty impressive and important. And, I, Brandy, I always welcome, as you know, the, um, the facts that do make this compelling, uh, argument that, um, different forms of post-secondary and technical education are so important, and they do translate into better outcomes, better job opportunities, even in the face of a recession. I would, I would just add one other fact is that we sometimes only talk about preparing the people for the 62% of the jobs that demand it. There's also really good data that says, if we care about people becoming entrepreneurs, um, they're much more likely to become an entrepreneur if they have higher levels of post-secondary attainment, even if they go to work as an administrative assistant or as a repair person, they're more likely to be the person that says, "I can create my own business," or "I can take over this business," because they're going to have higher levels. So I think I'm always eager for us to talk as much about, how do we help people be entrepreneurs on their own behalf as we are sort of taking a place in the economy? Because that's the way we're going to create even more powerful economic opportunity. But, um, you talked to both of you about the policy and kind of the agendas for how we improve, uh, post-secondary attainment, uh, and, and expanding the early-middle colleges and other strategies. Are there, um, each of you, are there one or two policy or financing changes that you think are the key to really helping us move forward? We've talked here historically about, we still don't have a financial incentive for dual enrollment, we have a disincentive. You talked to Vanessa about counselor training or different piece of, what does each of you think is the most important, one or two policy or financing priorities as we look at how to do better, uh, in moving this agenda, if you're, if you're able to help us see those?
So, so my top two would first be school counselors. Um, in Michigan, the student-to-counselor ratio is over 650 to 1. So how we expect especially high school counselors to be, um, have the capacity or focus necessary to provide this college advising, um, is beyond me, setting aside the, the training and professional development issue. So I think this could be done, I don't think, um, the solution is as expensive or as simple as saying, "Hire more counselors." I think that there are some really creative ways that we could build the capacity of school counselors by, um, really encouraging, uh, their, or incenting their districts to, A, prioritize this, um, above other, sometimes very administrative tasks that school counselors do, um, or building their capacity by hiring these advisors, which are functionally paraprofessionals, but recent college graduates to help, uh, students go through this process. So I think those are two relatively cost-effective, uh, ways to build counselor capacity. Of course, sort of ideal pie in the sky would be hire more counselors that are certified, et cetera. And then the second, and I know this, this, you know, body, uh, talking more as the, what the state could do, um, is direct student financial aid. Uh, the elimination of the Michigan Promise Scholarship in 2010 during, uh, the recession was, um, and during the previous administration, uh, was devastating to students. And students, um, many low-income students have priced themselves out of college, um, because they think, "Oh, the Promise Scholarship went away, and I don't, I know that I'm, my parents don't have money." That they don't understand the intricacies of, um, the federal Pell Grant program, um, need-based aid that institutions provide, uh, et cetera. And so having, even if it was just a small amount of money that was symbolic, you know, every student gets $1,000 or every student gets $500, that symbolism of, "We think you're college material," and everyone is college material, um, in, in the form of a promise or a guarantee, uh, would be, I think, game-changing for students.
Um, you know, I thi-, I think that's an interesting question. I think I, I think we would support, I think we're a little more cautious than Brandy on going all the way to more counselors and more, more incentives, but I think those are, that's why we have the two studies going on. Um, the counselors, I would agree, there's something actionable about counselors, and once we know exactly what it is, then putting some resources there, or targeting resources there in the schools that most need it. You know, maybe certain schools are handling this just fine, or hiring more counselors, and then others, it's, it's an average of 650 to 1, but what does it look like in our most needy schools? And how do we, and, and this goes to what Superintendent's been saying about, how do we target our resources on those most in need? So I think that that is, is important, that we do something intentional about counselors, but I'd like more information on what and where. Um, and then I would agree that, um, although the, the question of, the question of what do we do about aid and reducing the cost of college is a big one, but that's one that I think the, the education community has to continue to have, um, because it's, it's a real question, so.
You know, we, to that point, we have schools with thousands of kids in it with one counselor. And it's exactly the place where you would, you would need the better ratios. So the 650 is deceiving in that sense, as both Brandy and Vanessa have said. So, I mean, it is a targeting issue, and, and these are sometimes the, the most struggling academically. Of course, the deficit districts that need support, need resources to get out of this. And it's just like, it's a catch-22 in the whole, I'm glad we're doing this finance thing, there's pieces of it are more, um, nuanced eventually as the board deals with this than in the big picture. Dan was next, then Richard, then Kathleen, and Michelle?
Um, I am gonna, uh, so I'm gonna signpost, and it's six things, but it's gonna, they're all really fast.
We're crying over Dan.
They're all really fast.
This is why we put Cassandra next to you, by the way. Uh, one is-
Every day, more and more and more.
Quickly apologize for my late arrival, uh, my day job, we were celebrating 31 good schools in Detroit this morning, um, and so wanted to be there for that work. Two is a quick shout-out to our visitors from 4A to Forward, um, who I think we're not going to hear from today, uh, but who are a set of Detroit boosters and community activists and youth advocates, uh, in Detroit who are committed to improving the quality of public education in Detroit. And, uh, it's great to have you here, learning and listening, and can't wait to, one day, hear from you, uh, on, on whatever it is that, that you want to share with us.
Public participation is available anytime?
I think they're, they're leaving before lunch today, um, so we won't hear from them, but I'm sure they'll be back. Um, I'm seeing some head nods, so I'm sure they'll be back. Uh, three, really quickly, um, I'm always struck by, uh, in our conversation about education, kind of the multiple layers at which this is really important, and we are really compelling evidence around the economic importance of, of education, um, and the community good that exists. And I never want to, one of the ones that we don't, we don't talk about frequently, but I just want to lift up, and I think it's important that we keep in mind, is just quite simply the moral, the moral obligation, uh, to provide high-quality public education for folks. If we actually believe in equal, I mean, you think about, like, the notion of, of education being used as a lever to keep folks, um, from, uh, to keep folks enslaved. Uh, like the, the, if we actually believe in equal opportunity, um, there is simply a moral obligation to provide access to high-quality education to everybody. Okay. So, a, a quick shout-out to Brandy and MCAN. She didn't tell you, but I'm a, in, in, an interested observer in that we actually, at Excellent Schools Detroit, work with MCAN, uh, and support local LCANs, um, and in that capacity, um, were a part of a collective effort, as she described, that increased FAFSA completion rates in Detroit, year-over-year by 20% last year, from 53% to 73%, um, without significant additional money. Uh, and it would not have happened without the support of Brandy and her amazing team at MCAN. So, thank you for that. And couldn't be prouder of you and more excited to work with you, and just hope that you will one day, um, be the, a state superintendent of education here in Michigan, um, because we could use your energy and, and competency and so on in this work down the road.
We, we, yeah, we're on the boat.
I'll call you.
Um, lastly, so the quick question here is, so what, uh, so a lot of this work is work that's not kind of inform, it doesn't, uh, it's not necessarily supported by public policy yet, right? I mean, so this is all kind of extra to the system. What kind of success, if any, are you seeing, or interest are you seeing, um, you know, out of our legislature in reforming policy that might change the systems such that they produce more of these kinds of outcomes for our young people?
So, um, the way that I think has had the most, or, the example that I think could have the most legs is the use of performance-based funding and college funding. Um, so I know it's somewhat controversial, but I think for the first time, the fact that this administration and legislature has, um, really told colleges and universities that they can't just accept students, but they have a responsibility of, um, helping them persist and complete, is a really good policy. So I think that the legislature's really kind of skirting on the edges of that by providing some small incentive funding, uh, for that. So I think that's, but the fact that they've started, um, is, is really good. Um, I will say, uh, to the governor and the legislature's credit, uh, MCAN had a funding crisis a couple of years ago when a federal grant was pulled from us, and Superintendent Flanagan was incredibly, incredibly helpful and supportive, but, um, Michigan, uh, was the first state, and now since then, about 25 states have lost access to a federal grant called the College Access Challenge Grant, which was largely used to fund MCAN and our college access programs and our LCANs. Um, we lost the grant because of a violation of a maintenance-of-effort, uh, issue, so Michigan was punished because it had divested from higher education so significantly during the recession, um, that it caught up to us in 2012. Uh, and so we lost that grant. And, um, recognizing that we were going to lose the federal grant, no amount of begging Secretary Duncan for a waiver was helping, um, the governor and the legislature stepped up to help, um, provide funding, um, to partially restore that federal grant to, uh, MCAN, which is incredibly helpful. And I think one of the most compelling, um, factors for, um, the governor's office in particular was how much philanthropic investment that this issue of college access specifically garners. Um, and so by investing a little bit of public money into college access efforts, um, it's really leveraged many more millions in philanthropic investment from the Kresge Foundation, from Lumina Foundation, um, from countless community foundations and some other, uh, the Skilman Foundation, um, and some other private foundations. Um, so I will say, um, that that was, uh, incredibly positive, and we're really the only state that has a line item for a statewide college access network in the country, um, which is just, it, just incredible. The, the student financial aid issue is one that is going to take a lot of political will, um, because it is just jarring when you see the size of, uh, some sort of universal scholarship program like a Michigan Promise Scholarship. Um, but, uh, at the same time, when you compare how Michigan spent, what Michigan spends in student financial aid compared to other states, it's really embarrassing.
Uh, may I just say, not that Brandy inferred otherwise, but I did talk to the secretary, and Arnie Duncan did everything he could, and sometimes you're just wrapped into language that doesn't allow it, and the way it was worded, it's a catch-22 on the divesting, but so many states divested, and they were the very states that needed this the most, so it was, it was just a catch-22 that he, it's not that he didn't try to get that resolved. And then, yes, the, the governor and the team there stepped up. Yes, sir.
No, I'm good.
Oh, you are good? Oh, I thought you said-
That was five, that was five.
Well, like, shout-out and the FAFSA thing were, were 4A and 5.
Oh, well, if you're good, we're good, and then it goes to Rich, Richard, Richard, Kathleen, and Michelle.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate your, your work, especially in pointing out to young people what's really desirable, desirable goal. There are some aspects of it which, um, if you have some insight, please share it with us, but one of the, one aspect that kind of I, I wonder about, you know, traditionally college was a very exclusive kind of experience. Maybe 10% of Americans were thought to be, 10 to 20% of Americans were thought to be, um, even capable of undertaking college. So if, if we expand that to 60%, then we've changed the definition of what college is. And it's, it's no longer, uh, it's no longer the distinction that it, that it once was, we've changed its definition, it's, I mean, we want all our kids to be the best, but that's a dream, that, that's mathematically impossible, okay? And, and so how do we, so I, I guess I'm just wondering, what are the long-term ramifications of, of, um, telling, when you say, when you want kids to go onto college and post-secondary, you know, what you're really telling them is that, you know, what you learned in high school isn't good enough. And, and that troubles me because I'm aware that many of our, our greatest American leaders and thinkers, like Thomas Edison and Henry Ford and Malcolm X, never went to college. Uh, they, they developed their ideas and learned their skills in other, other settings. There, there is a tendency for higher education to redefine itself, you know, vocationally and, and to, to cover, try to, try to claim any kind of learning. Um, and that, that starts to, the, the definition of what college is versus, uh, other things, life skills. I mean, there are colleges that will give you credit for life skills, and now we're really, you know, all you got to do is live and you can get college credit. And, um, so I am, I am concerned as to the evolving, the changing meaning of, of these, of these things. And maybe related to that, if you have any thoughts to share, um, you know, or anything like that, is the, uh, we tend to, Americans tend to confuse credentials with competence. And we'd, we'd rather have a certified teacher teaching Spanish than a native Spaniard who doesn't have the certificate, you know? Even though the latter may have all the competence and the former, uh, has only got the credential. So I, and, and it almost, and that's the other side of encouraging people to go to college or whatever else, is we're seeing, are we promoting the learning or are we merely promoting, promoting the badge? Okay? So those are just some of the issues that I see latent in, in this. Do you have any thoughts or reflections that I'd appreciate?
Well, I'll just say that, um, on the definition of college, I think you're exactly right in that we really are, well, we are advocating for a redefined word, uh, college, to recognize that college is the umbrella term for post-secondary education. And so while it is not, um, realistic or desirable to have, um, all students receive a bachelor's degree or beyond, it is desirable economically for students to have pursued, um, something beyond high school, even if it is a six-month, um, welding certificate is one that we hear a lot. Um, or, uh, in, something in the technical field. Even in the technical and trade fields, you really can't, um, enter the profession without the certificate, and it's really industry-demanding. So I think philosophically, you, you may be right about the difference between credential and competence. Industry doesn't, uh, has a hard time measuring competence and really doesn't have the resources to do so. And so, um, as a, as a way of easing, um, sorting potential applicants, they really look for certificates, and I think it's a, um, you know, it's a decent system if the certificate actually measures competence in that, um, profession. Um, the, the only other thing I will- actually measures competence in that profession. The, the only other thing I will say, and I, I recently wrote an op-ed about this that got a lot of coverage, is that I want to be really, I really, I want to be really careful about the students that hear that message, that college isn't for everyone, because we tend never, ever to be talking about our own children. I'm not a parent. I don't have kids. I know Vanessa does. But, I would bet you a million dollars that Vanessa expects her kids to go to college. And I will expect my future students, students to go to college. When you start, when we, when you put out into the, you know, world, maybe some kids shouldn't go to college. The kids that hear that are the kids that weren't going to go without a push, not sort of our kids. So, I just want to say that that's something I'm, I'm really, really concerned about. And I think it's really dangerous. I think it's really dangerous, because I think, while I largely agree with you philosophically, I think from a messaging standpoint, it can be really, it can be really damaging to the students that hear it.
And I, I think too, I'd like to add to this, because I, I think this is one of the tensions whenever you do a presentation on, we want college for everyone, is there's always this question of, well, college, you know, the educational inflation debate, I mean, we can go back and dig into my sociology history, what do credentials really mean? But, the bottom line is, the economy has changed since Thomas Edison. And the differentiation and specialization you need to be successful is much greater than it possibly was many, not even that many years ago. And it's not entirely possible that that can happen in K-12, because it's not for everybody. We then have to slot into different types of, of work, and those have different types of credentials attached to them. I appreciate Brandy's point about credential isn't everything, but it's a marker for competence when it's hard to judge competence. And I would also say, the other thing, when I kind of wrestle with this at night, along with what Brandy said, is when you think about articulating statewide policy and building a statewide system, that doesn't mean that everybody's going to do it, but it means everybody needs the opportunity. And that we shouldn't be the judge of who gets that opportunity and who doesn't. And that's where I fall in terms of making sure that that access is there, knowing that not every person will go to college, or not, not everyone will go to the same college, and not everyone will do the same thing. But Brandy's point about, well, college isn't for everyone, and who internalizes that message and who sloughs it off, I think is really critical. So...
And like Vanessa, I'm a, I'm a first-generation college student. And thank God that my school counselors and the teachers in my school told me I was college material. I've shared this personal story before, but I tried, in 10th grade, I tried to take college prep chemistry and did not do well. And it was, the math was way too hard for me. I went to my school counselor, and I had internalized that if I couldn't do college prep chemistry, that meant I couldn't go to college. Because no one in my family's ever gone to college. I come from a modest-income family. I just, I thought that those two things were correlated. Advanced chemistry were for college kids. If you were in regular chemistry, you were the not-college track. And so, when I told, came to my counselor crying that I couldn't go to college, she was like, sweetheart, just don't major in chemistry. But, of course, you're college material. And if someone wouldn't have told me, of course, you're college material, I wouldn't have, you know, done what I've since accomplished.
Can I just mention, we all have those key points in our life, don't we, where someone took a direction for us in some way? And these are inspiring stories. I think one reason that you heard in the presentation is trying to focus on the schools that have the lowest percentages is it, it, there isn't an access issue. So, it's trying to at least say, in those cases, when you see the four neurons lift up, you, you get to a point where you realize, we're not in any danger there of an oversupply. I mean, it's really a situation where it will be kids have any opportunity at all. Kathleen and then Michelle?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've got to follow up a little on what, what Richard was saying. When I saw that, that the definition you had for college that includes post-secondary, I think maybe we should reverse it, say, talk about post-secondary, because it's more inclusive. There are levels of post-secondary. Some are one-year institutes that have a specific certificate. Some is two-year colleges, some are four-year colleges. Or maybe come up with another term. It's, it doesn't sound so schoolish or something. I don't know. But, I, I was, I thought about that, because I think, I think Richard has a point, that college is college and some of these other, people don't all have to go to college. They should be able to go to college if they want to, or if they're capable of doing it. So, I remember going to a school in Detroit, in, in the Brightmore District, which is, gets a lot of press. And the, the principal had a college club. This was elementary school. And if the student, if the, if the children have a certain grade point average, they could be members of the college club. And the, the principal had a special recognition day. They had T-shirts, "I'm a member of the col-" "I'm going to college," it said. And these kids had never thought about going to college before, I'm sure. But, this was her way of, stilling the idea that they could go to college or that they should go to college. So, I think that, there are all kinds of ways to do that, starting before high school, right, bright elementary school. It was, it was really great. They all went across the stage. I gave the beach a certificate. They're going to go to college. I hope they did. But, it, that's one idea. The, another idea I had, John's idea, the question about dual enrollment, the financing, I think that's an issue that we're going to have to deal with. What happened to John? We had to deal with when we do our school funding issue, because that has been a barrier for a long time. I've gone to lots of meetings where the universities didn't want to, didn't like the funding and wouldn't accept the students. There are all kinds of barriers for that. So, that's a problem. And another, another thing I, I thought of, a couple of weeks ago, I went to my, I hate to say this publicly, but my 70th college reunion, Hunter College in New York. When I went to Hunter College, it was just coming out, we were just coming out of the depression. I was there during the war years. And it was free. No tuition. We paid $4 a semester for a book fee. And we got all our books for that. And at the end of the semester, we turned them in and somebody else used them. And I, nowadays, it's preposterous, the money that has to be spent on textbooks at college and graduate school. So, if we could do that in the depression, in the depths of the depression, New York City provided free college education. Of course, probably only 10% of the people went in those days, but it was wonderful. And there were so many well-known people that graduated from the city colleges in New York, that it's just mind-boggling to me how we've gotten away from that, go in the other direction, raising tuition all the time, and then saying, everybody has to go to college. There's something wrong with that picture. Either we beat it or we, or we don't. If we really mean it, we're going to have to finance it. And that, that's, you mentioned it, Brandy, there has to be a political will. And we have to give the, let the leaders the political, we have to develop the will for them, urge them to get it, because otherwise, we're not going to increase by 60%. And how many, what do we talk about in numbers of students? If you really want to increase to 60%, let me, how did you phrase that?
60%.
60% increase to percentage of Michigan residents with high-quality degrees.
What is a 60%?
To 60%.
60% of population.
From what is it now?
Yeah, so this, oh, thank you for asking. That is a really good question. And it's something I obviously should have answered first. This, in your packet that has a picture of Michigan, is a report from Lumina Foundation called Stronger Nation. And it shows where Michigan is currently. Currently, Michigan is at 37.4% having an associate degree or higher. That doesn't include those certificates, because we just haven't figured out a way to measure them on the, in the census yet. So, really, it's probably closer to like 40 or 45% is where we are currently. The good news, and especially for this body, is that our young people are more educated than the older generation or the workforce at large. So, we're almost at 39% in terms of our, in terms of our young people. But, it puts out a sort of trajectory about how we would have to get there. And then, what most people love about this report is on the back, is a county-by-county breakdown of every county in Michigan and how close they are to goal 2025. In Michigan, we range from Lake County, which is where Baldwin, Michigan is, which has a 16% educational attainment rate, meaning only 16% of the people that live there have an associate degree or higher, all the way to Washtenaw County, which is at 60%. So, we have a range of 16 to 60. And that's a really good indicator for how many first-generation student, college students there are, or students going to college there are. Washtenaw is the only county in Michigan that has met goal 2025.
But in Ann Arbor, they have a lot of those Michigan degrees. So, you need to wonder. You need to wonder. You know, Kathleen's making a point that I think we should think about together in our partnership, which is, as hard as we try to define college ready to be beyond that, it does connote four-year, no matter what we do.
That's what people think.
Yeah, there's probably another...
College is four-year.
Yeah, we'll work on that. Because, you know, many times we'll say that, it's an, it's an issue. And then, I think there's some intellectual honesty in what Richard's saying about, you know, I can remember as a local student, we would want to brag about all our merit scholar kids, that if it wasn't for us, but we didn't really want to take any responsibility for kids that were, you know, were struggling. So, where the learning occurs, we should be more open to also. I think Michelle was next, ma'am.
Yeah. I actually looked up the ratio from the American Counselor Association. They said Michigan was 46th in the country as far as, you know, doing poorly on the ratio. And they had it at 100, 706 to 1. And of course, that's the average of most states and poor communities, or they don't, and where they may also need the counselors for other issues besides, you know, college readiness. So, I think that's a real, I was kind of astounded that it was so terrible, 46th in the whole country. So, it seems like we need to hire more counselors, you know, at some point. But, I was going to ask about the, the folks that you have come in and that sort of, that support. Are they, how long do they stay? And how is that funded?
Yeah. That's a great question. They generally stay for two years, and then another young person rotates in. It's part, part of the model is that it's near peer. So, we only hire 22- and 23-year-olds to fill the position, because they relate more to a 16, 17, 18-year-old than any of us could. And...
Not you. You could relate to her easily.
No offense. No, even I am too old. And so, they, but once we partner with a high school, it's our intention to stay there forever. So, even though the actual advisor rotates in and out every two years, it's a sort of long-term partnership with that high school. We'll, we'll stay there as long as they'll have us. The program is, I think, one of the coolest part of programs is how it's financed. It's, we divide the cost into basically four parts. There's a, it's a four-stream, braided funding model, where MCAN puts in some of the funding. We raise about a third of it locally. A sixth of it comes from national sources, national philanthropic sources. And then, a sixth of it comes from institutions. And in Michigan, from U of M and MSU. So, only one-third of the total cost is from, really, public dollars from a state appropriation. The money that's raised locally almost always comes from community foundations or United Ways. It's a very philanthropically attractive model, because you can see the person. So, I can see the advisor sitting in my high school, see their desk, see them working with students. It's something that local funders are really attracted to. And I want to be very clear, and I get in trouble with this, on this a lot, that these advisors are not counselors. We never call them counselors. They are college advisors. And they don't, they are not equipped to deal with any of the social, emotional crises-type problems that certified school counselor can. So, only, that's all they do is college advising, very limited. If a student comes in with a personal problem, they immediately refer them out to the school counselor.
How does the school get involved with that if they wanted to?
They can contact me. And I gave you my card. But, there's information about our website on MICollegeAccess.org. And we have advisors in rural and suburban placements. And then, even some that are, have actually just taken the model and run with it and self-funded it. So, in the Holland area, we have an advisor at Holland High School and an advisor at West Ottawa High School. Zeeland wanted an advisor. They didn't have the same kind of need, but they recognized they had pockets of need. So, they hired their own advisor, used our training materials, but self-funded the salary of the advisor, which I thought was a really creative way to making sure every high school student had an access to an advisor.
So, I just, I just have another question. Well, actually, I'll focus on one. So, the...
Make it six. Make it happen.
Six. Well, I was, I was curious about when you talk about special education students transitioning out and where they may not be college-ready or not necessar-, they, you know, what sort of programming and focus is on their future, kids who may, that's one question. And then, I'm going to just throw them together. Also, has there been any connection with talking to apprentice programs that are run by the skilled trades unions? Because I know with, I think it was with A. Philip Randolph in Detroit, they had a, and they would work with the, the unions and to get them, you know, prepped to go through the apprentice programs, which are really good-paying jobs. And, you know, then, and really great training, some of the, you know, the best training you can get. So, I did, didn't see that as a partner and was wondering if that's something that was considered. And if not, why not? So, those are my two questions.
Well, in terms of the special education transitions, that was kind of a quick flag to say that, you know, we expect Michigan, students with disabilities in Michigan to transition to college career and community. But, there is a, and that that's individualized for them, what that means and what that looks like. There is a strand of specific transition, even out of the services, when, when time ends, there's specific transition planning that doesn't happen with all of our students. So, certainly, not to say, like special education always is, it's individualized for each student, what the, what the, how long they stay in the system here, and then what happens after that. If it's at college, is it more training? Is it a transition program? Is it on and on from there? So, in terms of the apprenticeships, we did discuss it. What we'd like to do at this point is support the use of apprenticeships through our grant programs, through incentives, but not actually specifically centralize apprenticeships here at the department, because of the need to, it's very local, it's very partnered, partnered with employers, a need to negotiate, you know, a lot of things that we would rather support the system to allow local districts to do it more efficiently. Things like seat time waivers, giving them the freedom to do it, but not saying this is how you have to do it. So...
Okay. Thank you. I, I, we're over the hour a bit, but it was well worth it. Lupe's given me the look at least three times. I'm getting nervous here. And on a serious note, I know some board members have issues, appropriately have issues related to eating about on time. So, let's, I'm happy to be flexible if you'd like to. I'm not sure how much flexibility we have.
All right, then we should move on. If we're going to try to squeeze it in. We want to be sensitive.
I got some oyster crackers.
By the way, Brandy aced my class.
Craig was my teacher.
But then again, we didn't have any chemistry.
Well, that's true. He taught me how, he taught me how to write an op-ed, which I've now become famous for.
Recre- wrecked you for life.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you both.
Now, with schools, this was close to the...
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Susan, even though you said you're going to be brief, this is important too. I, I want to lay some groundwork for this. For those of us who...
Have stories to tell your grandchildren.
I think one of the things we need to kind of get our, our head wrapped around as a state, is career in college ready actually starts with this next presentation.
Right.
And so, we're at a point, I felt, I was a little embarrassed, because I, someone, I don't read the comments below news articles anymore, because they're devastating, especially when they're so personal. But, someone sent me a copy of the comments below it, which I thought was really mean-spirited. And underneath, I had said something like, a little defensive about the dropout rate admittedly, and said, well, you know, with the investments that are being made in early childhood and all the work, and the fact that the universe has kind of come together, both political parties seem to be together on early childhood, that in 13 years, you're going to see a spike like you can't believe. Now, you know, I certainly didn't mean we need, can't do anything else. You saw these other things. But, it, I do want to reemphasize, this is how we're going to take care of those kinds of issues, is with opportunities for all of our kids before they get to kindergarten, to have the same opportunities that some of our kids have had regardless of that. And then, we'll solve these problems. And really, 13 years, by the way, even though I got massacred for that, 13 years ago was 2001. You know, it goes like this. So, I think any of these strategies that we can have in place that we think work... So I think any of these strategies that we can have in place that we think work, I also want to just say, I really don't want, I mean, I think you need to do justice to this. It's such important work that you've done, especially since Sheri's been willing to join us as a guest. But I'll let Susan do the introductions here.
Okay. Good morning, afternoon to the board. The presentation is called "A Great Start to Quality." That's the official title, but what I'd really like to say is, it's the answer to Richard's question about what is the quality of the settings that our children are in. Ever since we've been presenting, Richard has asked about quality, and the answer really is implementing a quality rating and improvement system. And so that's what we're going to describe today. In thinking about it, and thinking about quality rating and improvement systems, they are really set up to assess, improve, and communicate the quality of early learning settings, and that means childcare settings, preschools, as well as Head Start organizations. And it's using an objective way of assessing quality across all of the settings. Now, in implementing a quality rating improvement system, it's done for a variety of reasons. Number one, to be objective in looking at quality, to help parents understand quality in the different settings, as well as to give policymakers a way to look at programming and figure out what needs to change, as well as providers get a roadmap to improving their quality. There are three components to a quality rating system. The first is quality assurance. All quality rating and improvement systems are based on quality metrics, standards that guide the provision of excellent services. Secondly, supply interventions, and what that means is that part of a quality rating system are program interventions, whether it be a self-assessment for a program to identify their strengths, whether it's the quality improvement consultation that is provided to the program to help them improve their services, as well as professional development opportunities. The third component is the demand side, and that's really that a quality rating and improvement system is done in a way where it's usually by stars, that there are stars from three to five that indicate the status of the quality of that organization, that are, as I call, easily understandable to mere mortals, and that are something that people understand, whether it's in Michigan or another state. At this point, 37 states in the country are implementing a quality rating system. Ours is called, in Michigan, "Great Start to Quality," and it's led by the Michigan Department of Education, Office of Great Start. However, it's being implemented by the Early Childhood Investment Corporation in conjunction with 10 regional resource centers scattered across the state of Michigan. Participation, and this is, I've got to stress this, participation in this system is voluntary. We do not require all organizations to participate, but all licensed programs are automatically in the system, but they are a, in quote, "empty star." The goal, which connects to the State Board of Ed, Michigan Department of Education, goal is to improve the quality of all early childhood settings so that we can increase the number of children in appropriate, high-quality early learning and development programs, which is one of the goals for the department and the State Board of Ed. Now, I'd like to introduce Lisa Brewer-Wallhaven, who is the Director of the Office of Child Development and Care, as well as Sheri Butters, who is the Director of the Great Start to Quality for the Early Child Investment Corporation, who are going to dive deep into what this really is.
So Great Starts to Quality in Michigan has been a conversation for several years, developed over many years with input from a variety of stakeholders. And we currently still have those stakeholders involved in conversations about the implementation that is ongoing. We launched in the fall of 2001, and we launched statewide, so a big undertaking to move this project at the statewide level. Over time, we learned through data and feedback from parents and providers that there were some quality improvement matters that we needed to address in the system itself. So in June of 2013, we actually moved to what we call version 2.0 of Great Start to Quality. And version 2.0 took into account that feedback to make sure that we were recognizing training and experience of home-based providers, that we were providing opportunities for programs to provide their information to us electronically, and that we were being mindful of the programs who were participating, who already had other monitoring standards and criteria that we needed to incorporate into our process. We really focus on three things with this program, which Susan has touched on, so I'm not going to go into a lot more detail, but it's having a common set of standards that everybody is assessed against, it's making sure that we're increasing the quality of programs through a variety of strategies that are appropriate based on the early learning and care program, and it's about engaging parents and helping them make the best choice for their child in terms of what they are looking for. In Michigan, we took a unique approach to our Great Start to Quality rating system. We wanted to ensure that we created a continuum, and that continuum really addresses the fact that we have children who are in a variety of settings, and Susan's already mentioned several of those, whether it's preschool, whether it's a childcare center, a Head Start, a home-based program, or even in the care of an unlicensed subsidized provider, which some of you may know as family, friend, and neighbors. So this continuum allows for all of those providers to participate in our quality improvement efforts. On the left-hand side of the continuum, where you see the tiers, is where those unlicensed subsidized providers have an opportunity to engage and improve their quality. At tier one, all of those providers complete a seven-hour orientation training, which includes CPR and first aid, child development information, as well as health and safety information. And then as they move through the tiers, they're receiving additional support, hopefully with the intent of moving towards licensure, or becoming a licensed provider. Then, sort of from the middle to the right-hand side, you'll see those star ratings that Susan mentioned that help signify the level of quality to those who are looking. They range from an empty star to five stars. The empty star means that the program meets the state's licensing requirements, and as you move up that continuum all the way to the fifth star level, it's demonstrating that that program is at the highest quality level. So as you continue to move up in your stars, you're meeting more and more of the standards and demonstrating a higher level of quality. In Michigan, we have seen some shifts in where children are participating in programs since we begun these efforts along that entire continuum that you were just looking at. To give you an example, in fiscal year 2010, we had 43% of our subsidy children in the care of a licensed or registered provider or early learning setting. Today, we have 69% of our CDC subsidy children in the care of a licensed or registered provider, so really helping move them into having access to a higher-quality program. We do know that nearly 60% of those children that I was just mentioning are in the care of a home-based provider in a home setting. So again, that could be in a family home, group home, or with that unlicensed subsidized provider. And those providers really are a critical choice for families because they are often able to provide care during a time when the family needs it most, to wrap around other opportunities and programs, whether it's because they have a non-traditional work schedule or needs that are outside of regular programming times. This next slide shows you participation data, and we did put a date on the participation data because participation data is changing every day, so this is actually from the beginning of May. Currently, we have 10,000 licensed, approximately 10,000 licensed and registered programs in Michigan who can participate in the star rating portion of our continuum. We have 1,532 providers who have those star ratings, 1,417 of them have star ratings at three, four, or five. So currently, about 15% of our providers in Michigan are voluntarily participating in our quality rating improvement system. For quality rating improvement systems across the nation, there are elements that are nationally recognized as critical to your development and implementation, and Michigan's system is actually based on these five common elements. Here, you can see, particular to our Michigan program, what is connected to each of these. The first is tiered program standards. These clearly help us differentiate the program quality in the different levels as providers are working to improve that quality. They are aligned with Michigan's early childhood standards of quality for pre-kindergarten and infant and toddler programs, which are standards that are approved by this board. So we've made sure that our system is aligned. We've also crosswalked those with the Head Start standards, again, making sure that the standards are incorporated across the programs. Monitoring is another big element that's important in quality rating improvement systems. That helps us evaluate the level of quality. In Michigan, we use a self-assessment. We also use trained staff who go out to the programs to do an assessment of the environment and the interactions that are happening in those environments. Sheri's going to talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Supports are an important piece. While the ratings are informative to the public in regards to the level of quality, a real goal is that we're continually helping programs improve their quality. So what are the supports that are available to them to move from one-star rating to the next in that continuum, whether it's training, whether it's technical assistance, or quality improvement consultation through a variety of mechanisms? We've already talked about the ratings, so that everybody has access to see the level of quality of the programs and get information about that level of quality. And the fifth is evaluation, and that really helps us look at the reliability and validity of our rating system so that we can continually make improvements to that system. And I'm going to turn it over to Sheri to go into some more depth.
All right, good afternoon. So the picture you see up on the screen, and you haven't done your slides, really just shows the steps that providers go through when they're participating in Great Start to Quality. So step one, where you see the red area, is really the first step a program takes. And so this is the step where we ensure we have accurate program information. So programs actually, they'll log in, update their program profile, is what we call it, and that allows them to designate a primary contact, allows them to update, you know, specific things related to their program that help inform the rating system. So that could include the number of program, or the number of classrooms within their program, which informs our assessment and efforts, as you'll hear about in a minute. Once that program profile is updated, they then begin the self-assessment process. So they would move on to step two, which they actually complete a self-assessment survey, which is based on the standards that Lisa just shared with you. They complete that survey. The next step then is to provide the required documentation to show evidence of the indicators that they've checked in their self-assessment survey. So they're actually going through and saying, yes, this is true for my program, this is true for my program, and then they're uploading documentation to show evidence that they are in fact doing those things. So once that self-assessment is complete, and they upload the required documentation, they then can submit their self-assessment survey, and at that point, their submission of that self-assessment survey, we would consider them to be participating in Great Start to Quality. And so programs who have not yet completed that self-assessment survey and submitted it are not counted in the participation number that Lisa shared with you. So once they've submitted the self-assessment survey, they can then move straight into quality improvement efforts. So they can begin developing their quality improvement plan, which is actually a function of our, our online tool that we use for the rating system. There's actually a quality improvement plan that is built based on the results of their self-assessment survey. So this process can be began before engaging any staff. If they prefer to work on their own, they can certainly do that, but they do have access to a quality improvement consultant through each of our resource centers. So each resource center employs staff within their, within their regions to support staff with quality improvement planning, coaching, and consultation to support that effort as well. So that may include assisting with the identification of goals, identifying, identifying where improvements might need to be made to increase their star level. They could set a certain goal, let's say they're a three, and they're really striving to be a four, they can set specific goals that are designed to get them to that next star level. So then next, they can move on a small number of programs, a certain number of programs are selected for validation. So that is actually when we employ the, the staff that Lisa referenced that are trained and reliable to go out and actually validate a self-assessment survey. So this is someone who reviews in-depth the documentation that's been uploaded, and actually will make a site visit to verify that what has been checked in the self-assessment survey is actually matching what is in, in practice in that program on that day. So the next step then would be the program quality assessment. So those programs that self-assess and are validated at higher levels of quality, so at stars four and five, they actually require an onsite classroom assessment, and Great Start to Quality uses the program quality assessment developed by the High Scope Research Foundation. And we use all versions, we use three versions of the PQA. So we use the infant toddler, the family PQA, and the preschool PQA, depending on the program type. So that assessment is done onsite within the program, and once that is done, the results are shared back with the program, and we move on, and a published rating is then provided to that program. So this will give you an idea. It was mentioned earlier, Susan, I think, mentioned that we have 10 resource centers across the state, so this is a great way to look at them. You can see where they're located and what counties they include. This map is available on our website, and it's actually a clickable map, so providers can easily find the resource center that supports their work. And we'll move on to the next slide here. So resource centers provide, as, as it was mentioned, a real, a really diverse menu of services to providers to really support their quality improvement efforts. Those include workforce development, so training and professional development. They provide the Great Start to Quality orientation that was mentioned for unlicensed subsidized providers. They also provide access to quality improvement consultations, so they, they maintain trained coaches who can work one-on-one with providers to improve their quality levels. They also provide staff who are able to assist with the, the process of Great Start to Quality. So there's staff onsite within the resource centers who can actually help a provider if they have questions about the assessment process, anything along the way through the process of getting their rating. There's someone who can actually answer questions, go onsite and actually help them with that process if they have problems uploading documents, anything related to the technical aspects. There are staff available for that. They also provide access to quality improvement resources. So each resource center maintains a lending library of materials, curriculum materials, different resources that providers can use to really support the implementation of their quality improvement plan. So those are available through each of the 10 resource centers as well. So we did want to quickly highlight the website that's available for parents, providers, and community partners. So this is the Great Start to Quality website, and you can see, if you click on the, the landing page, but if you click on Parents, this particular page provides information about what quality is, what Great Start to Quality is, and really just helps them learn more about how to choose quality childcare and preschool, and also provides links to actually go and do that search, and we'll show you that in a minute. So the Providers and Educators tab really provides information about, excuse me, how to participate in Great Start to Quality and some of the benefits of why they would want to participate in Great Start to Quality. And then we have, also, the Providers and Educators also have information about their resource centers, provides them a place to find that easily. The Community Partner page, of course, you know, features Mike and his video about early childhood... childhood, and, but it also just gives information to community partners about the importance of quality and why it matters, and why, you know, why it's important that we invest in quality. So, we do want to quickly walk you, or walk you through the search option. So, a critical component of Great Start to Quality is really helping families find childcare and preschool that is high-quality and meets their needs. So, this is our Great Start Connect platform, and this is the online searchable database that allows families to actually go in using criteria that they select relative to if they're looking for a preschool, a center, family home, and Lisa's walking us through a search for centers. You can designate where you want these providers to be, so you can search, parents can search, you know, in relationship to where they work, where they live, and by quality level as well. So, you'll see the search has returned several, and we have anywhere from five-star down to empty star. The higher-quality programs will list higher on the list, and then, towards the bottom, you'll see the empty stars. But this allows the families to look at the Great Start to Quality self-assessment survey results. So, if they have a certain component that's really important to them, they can look and see how highly the program scored there. I think I will pause.
Something else that we've been moving in our program is two initiatives that really does recognize the programs and their quality rating. So, with our four-year-old preschool program here in Michigan, the Great Start Readiness Program, programs do have to have a minimum of three stars to participate and receive funding. That's whether the program is operated at an ISD or whether it's being implemented at a community-based organization. And we do have the requirement of 30% of those programs being operated in community-based organizations, which is important for parental choice and for access, as well as continuity of care. And this summer, we will actually also be able to begin something called Tiered Reimbursement. Tiered reimbursement will go to the subsidized providers who are caring for children and who have a three, four, or five-star rating. They will actually receive a higher reimbursement rate for achieving those levels of quality to help demonstrate increased access to those programs, as well as the outcomes for children. And then, another piece is the Race to the Top Award that was received in Michigan. We received $51.7 million. Portion of that really does focus on this quality rating improvement system around access for children, increasing opportunities for participation, whether it's through incentives or other opportunities, a focus on increasing home-based provider participation, and ensuring that families have information that's important for them to be engaged in their child's early learning opportunities. So, I think we're...
Thank you for being able to share this with you. I know rather quickly. Back to you, Mike.
I just had a quick question, if I could.
Michelle, and then Dan.
Yeah, I know there's a real concern, a family of, like, special-needs children to find quality childcare, like my child with autism and a lot of other people, and I know I used Childcare Coordinating Council at one point, and they were able to help me identify. So, I'm wondering if this program helps parents of kids with, you know, some higher needs and rewards the providers who actually accept these children and sort of adjust outcomes considered. I don't know if that's been considered, but I, if it's not, I would ask that it was. But I'm asking, is it being considered, and if not, would you?
So, our resource center is one of the functions that I, I was speeding up, so I glossed over, but the staff that are available to help providers are also on hand to respond to parents who might need additional assistance to kind of get to those special areas of need that might exist. So, they're actually available on the other end of the phone, or someone is stopping into their office, to respond to those special, special things they might need assistance with. One of the functions of the, I'm pointing to the screen because that's where it lived, I'm sorry. So, the Great Start Connect platform, when parents are searching through, selecting those criteria, there are search options to identify. You can check boxes related to if you're looking for someone with experience, you know, with children with autism or any other special needs. As the program actually through their profile update will go through and indicate those areas where they may have special education, they may have additional credentials, or just years of experience, and anything they're able to indicate will show up in that search.
Is there any way to incentivize, because I find that nobody would want to provide that service, or no one would want to take in those children because it's just so hard. And so, there's, so I didn't know if there was any way to reward or to incentivize, you know, give some special recognition to programs that do provide more accessibility to all children.
I'd say that's currently not a component of Great Start to Quality, so I defer back to Susan.
Well, the policy, at this point, with the four-year-old expansion, we recommended to the legislature that all children with IEP are, regardless of income, would be automatically qualified for the Great Start Readiness Program. So, we're hoping that they will...
Would qualify for what?
Automatically. Automatically be eligible for the Great Start Readiness Program. Now, there's an income eligibility, and that, for some children whose family's income is over that, even though that would be the best place to be in an inclusive classroom, can't get in because of the...
Although they don't provide the service.
Right.
Which I think is a form of discrimination, but anyway.
Thank you. Good question. Dan.
Two comments and a quick question. Thank you. Always, always want this topic talked about more at this table. I just think it's mission-critical, and I don't think we spend enough time on it, quite honestly. I probably made that clear. But, so, comment number one is, couldn't agree more with Michelle. It's akin to weighted funding in the K-12 space. It doesn't cost the same thing to educate all students, and I think we probably need to recognize that in the early childhood space as well, and push for weighted subsidies such that students with special needs, who are going to be more expensive to care for and educate, actually come with more money from the state in order to help providers do that. Second is the, so, love Great Start to Quality, I think it's a really important thing for us to do. I have all sorts of other points that I won't make now, but maybe the one that strikes me as most important here is that if there is a weakness in the system, it is around the amount of energy and effort spent on improvement. And to the extent that we can increase resources available there, I think uptake of the program will grow dramatically, as well as actual improvement in quality, which is the thing that we want to see happen. So, really hope that, I know that some Race to the Top dollars are allocated for that purpose, but to the extent that future efforts and pushes are made in the legislature to gain appropriation for early childhood or to reallocate existing dollars, it seems to me that money on improvement, on quality improvement, helping folks get to a higher-star rating, I hear all the time from folks who say, you know what, I'm just, I'm reluctant to get in because I don't think I can get to a three from a one or a two, because I can't afford to send my educators to back-to-school or whatever it is. Like, more energy on improvement will enable more folks to get in, make them less reluctant to get in, and then actually improve the quality of care. So, the quick question, at the very outset, you threw out that there would have been this remarkable increase in the number of, or the percentage of subsidy-eligible children who are being cared for in licensed environments versus unlicensed just a few years ago. So, to what do you account, like, to what, what reason do we have for that shift, if any, I mean, just based on your thinking? It was an astounding shift in just a few years.
You can answer. I have my answer, but go ahead.
I think it really is some of the initiatives that we implemented along that continuum related to the quality improvement efforts and helping give parents information about the choices that are available to them so that they could make the appropriate choice for their family.
So, it's, it's more a case of folks choosing licensed providers now, as opposed to some of the unlicensed becoming licensed, and so growing the numbers that way? It feels more like it's...
Well, it's also the policy change that required training to even become a tiered. And when that actually was implemented by the legislature, you saw a shift in what I call the provider profile.
Get subsidies.
Yeah, yeah. So, it was a bar. It was not a really high bar, but it was a bar that changed the numbers.
And by, are all the tiered providers licensed?
No.
They're not, right?
No.
Okay. But wasn't the data that you, the number that you shared was the shift from unlicensed care to licensed care among subsidy-eligible children? Okay. All right. That's fantastic. I'd love to hear more about that, like, why that's happening. I mean, that's just, that's great.
We could do a mid-month component on that a little bit, give us more. Okay. Well, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think it's well-received, as always, and appreciate the comments by the board along those lines. And we'll, what do you think for timing on lunch?
About 1:20.
1:20. Okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, those who are coming back, it's 1:20. Back there. Sharp?
The pass.
Thanks.
Well, this is...